Here.
Councilmember Peralta?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Cantu?
Here.
Mr. Cordova, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'd remain standing just for a minute to offer up a moment of silence for those in our community that are having a very difficult time financially. Counselors, item number five on our agenda is the approval of the agenda for this afternoon's meeting.
Vote for approval. Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes. Item six, approval of the minutes, February 10th, 2015, a regular meeting.
I'm going to move to approve those.
Second.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes. And six B, February 17th, 2015, the special meeting minutes.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Item seven, awards and recognitions, employee of the month, and Ms. Amy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and councilmembers and Mr. Manager. This afternoon, we would like to make a presentation for our employee of the month for March, and we would like to recognize Antonio Sanchez, if you will please come up. Antonio, we would like to award you their certificate for your outstanding dedication, extraordinary attention to detail, and positive attitude. Thank you very much for everything that you do for the town. I always see you at town hall, and since I've been working here, I've known you to be a very good worker, and we appreciate everything that you do. In addition, we have a gift certificate for you, and also a day of personal leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for your service work, Mr. Sanchez, to our community. Moving along, item eight, presentations, councilmember Judith Cantu to speak on or present to the council regarding Cesar Chavez celebration and a countywide town yard sale. Ms. Cantu.
Thank you all for having me here today, and this is a promotion for the Towneet House, so with us, and I'm really excited about this. March 31st is Cesar Chavez Day, and the plan is, and I've already reserved the mural room at the old county courthouse in the plaza, to have a documentary of Cesar Chavez, and also a question and answer lecture afterwards. A lot of people from New Mexico and also from Taos were migrant workers back in the day, and to this day, there are still people who also continue to travel to Colorado to go pick potatoes. I think this is a cultural event. It's an incredible thing that we have the opportunity to celebrate as a town and to get in on, for the new people, for the old timers, and for everybody who loves history, which I am one of. This is just on the 31st, it's a prelude to a bigger event that a committee and myself are working on, August 1st and August 2nd, and that's a combination of two different things. That one is going to be a much larger scaled celebration for Cesar Chavez. On July 25th, 1970, they signed, it was the very last vineyard who signed the United Farm Workers Bill agreement with Cesar Chavez and the union. And also on August 26th is the 45-year anniversary of the actual signing of the bill. So the availability on August 1st, and I am still waiting to hear about the park, but the mural room is available, and that's going to be a day of celebration. There's going to be a reenactment of the march. And I have Mr. Cordova. Can you come up? Our historian here. I'm going to let him speak for now.
Good afternoon. I'm Arsenio Cordova from El Prado. I've been a teacher of Chicano Studies at the university, and my first job after my college days was working with migrant education program in Cuesta and Cerro, and working with migrant education kids in education, you know, just seeing how some of these students did lag behind when they came back from picking in the fields, and what we had to do to help them catch up and do that. After that, I became a social worker, then a professor of American Studies, Chicano Studies, and Southwest Studies, you know, and just to tell you that I think that this is long overdue, that we celebrate the people of here, you know, two that come right into mind, Mr. Fidel Garcia from El Prado, who used to take truckloads of kids from the community to the potato fields and to the fruit fields in Grand Junction, before school started. We were always kind of jealous because they'd missed two weeks of school, and we'd have to be there in school studying, but then it was a catch-up for them. Also, Mr. Frank Escivell, who took his family to pick peaches, you know, they used to live in ranchitos in Grand Junction, Colorado, in California, and different places, that farmworkers actually did do that. In 1996, after Cesar Chavez passed away, I took a group of students and we marched for the National Chicano Conference in Sacramento, to the capital, to demand that the rights of the farmworkers be looked at again within that state of California. So, you know, I've been really, really involved. We have a committee now that would like to celebrate this here in Taos. We have, want to have a panel discussion on the movie Struggle for the Fields, which is partly a story of how the farmworkers united, from which came the theater, Chicano Theater, Luis Valdez, and Corquion Gonzalez in Denver. So we want to celebrate these people that really brought it to the forefront. There's a four-part series, Struggle, you know, for the land, Reyes Lopez de Guerina, also Struggle for the Fields, Cesar Chavez, then the walkouts in California, when they were not teaching the kids, you know, and then also the political aspect, where the Raza Unida Party was formed, you know, throughout the Southwest. So I feel that this is a very worthwhile project. I think that it's time to honor the people that really, we can identify with. Mr. Gilblas Gallegos from Cuesta used to tell me how they'd go for the potato farms, and he had sellers there in Cerro, and they'd give him all the potatoes that were deformed, you know, and, you know, they were, you know, just, and he would bring them back, and he would distribute all those potatoes among the people of the county of Taos, you know, and give them to them free, you know. So deformed potatoes taste the same as regular potatoes. You know, so one of the things that we do want to do during this time is also in August is involve our youth, you know, at the schools, and have an essay contest on study of the farmworkers and Reyes Lopez, and, you know, not necessarily have to be about Cesar Chavez, but it can also be about some of the local families that have participated in those things, or some of the history. It'll be a good research project for the students during that time. I'd like to say that this is a wonderful project, you know, and I, you know, I've expressed myself here about who is honored, who is not honored, and things like that in the past, and you know that, but I'd like to finish with a quote in Espanol. Nuevo México hasta cuándo durarán tus desconsuelos con el extranjero juzando y tu gente por los suelos?
Thank you.
And if you didn't understand that, watch the video on TV and get a dictionary. And I do want to say, my daughter is a Chicano Studies teacher at University of New Mexico, Professor and Dr. Teresa Cordova, and she's helping us with a program that is going to come. She owns the Pistoleras in El Prado, their cultural center, so we invite you to stop by and look at, and read up on a little bit about our culture and our language. A person without a knowledge of their history is like a tree without any roots, and my grandmother used to say, we die three times. We die when we breathe our last, second death when we are buried, third and most tragic when we are forgotten. And it's our responsibility to make sure that these wonderful people are never forgotten.
Thanks, Arsenio.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, I did contact the different radio stations to see about advertising this, and the Taos news as well, to see if we can get an ad in the newspaper for a couple of weeks, and the budget that I am looking for the Towneet House would be approximately $2,716.99 is, would be for advertising. And I wanted to share this. Actually, El Moisés, who's a local artist here, he's a world-renowned Chicano artist, and he's gone to the Historic Preservation Commission seeking to do murals on our walls here, has generously allowed us to use his painting of Cesar Chavez. He's not asking any money for it, the only thing he asked was that his name be shown in the ad. And so I'm going to let you see this.
Mr. Mayor, is there going to be any other fees for the use of the mural room, such as chairs, or audiovisual aids, or anything like that?
Well, people are donating the audio equipment, the television. I'm going to ask UNM if we can borrow the chairs at the civic center from them. If not, I think I'll ask my church. So I'm trying to do this as frugally as possible. So I'm really excited about this, and in August, that, those events, which I'm going to come back, because I don't have a budget for the yard sale at this point, or actually the figures for an August event, but I want to make it a weekend-long event so that people will stay here, they'll come in, they'll rent hotel rooms, they'll eat at our restaurants, they'll, you know, come and enjoy Taos and visit, and I do have the mural room already for August, which I've talked to the county about, and I'm hoping to collaborate in this so that, you know, it'll benefit both of us, and it's our community. And it's going to be a day of musical events. If everything works out right and the weather is perfect, we're going to have bands at the park, and there's going to be food, so people will stay there. And the other thing on that same weekend would be a collaboration of a countywide and a town yard sale for economic stimulus, and this one I'm also hoping to advertise throughout the state and Southern Colorado. In other states, there's yard sales, there's one in Indiana right now, it's a 60-yard, 60-yard, 60-mile-long yard sale, that they've been running for 10 years, and it's just getting bigger and bigger. There's one in Oklahoma. If you Google it, there's some in other states that have been quite successful, and I think that bringing people to Taos for yard sales would be a fun thing for the entire weekend. And we have, there's a lot of plans in works, and that is reaching out to organizations, to churches, to individuals all over the county, all over the town, to see if they would want to join in on this yard sale, and using the park that day, also with a celebration going on in a different section of the park, and the county parking lot, and as well as people being able to have the yard sales at their homes, and just advertising it and bringing people here for both events, both Cesar Chavez and the yard sale. And I hope that that excites you, because I'm really looking forward to this, and it's the first annual, so if it's real successful, then we can look forward to this next year, and, you know, as long as possible. Any questions?
I have a question of our student council member. Do you think that this would be something on the 31st, let's say maybe even on the 30th, and I'm going to ask Arsenio if he's willing to do this, would be to have a special showing and question and answer for high school students, separate from the adults that would be going on the 31st?
I think the success that is entirely dependent on how, you know, how much students know about it, where we run it, and how much outreach you do in the high school. If students know about it and have a good reason to come, like if you integrate it with like this essay contest, Mr. Cordova mentioned, part of a larger event, and they actually know about it, then it could be very successful, but it really depends on the publicity.
This is, I mean, it just came to me after watching our unfortunate council member come in in a foot cast, and I just thought about it and saying, you know, if we're going to look at how do we preserve our culture and educate our children about our culture, that this may be one of those opportunities to do that separate from what we anticipated to be an adult program on the 31st, doing something for the school kids.
Well, I think that's a great idea. One of the, one of the things is that, so much of it is that our educational system in New Mexico has been very hard-pressed to offer New Mexico history to our students, you know, they, you know, we say you've got to do it in the seventh grade, and it's up to the teacher as to how much they want to present on that history. In teaching US history, I found that New Mexico probably was given maybe three or four paragraphs in the total history book, you know, and just, when in fact, you know, the El Paso del Norte in 1598, you know, before the pilgrims came, the people were already coming here to Taos and to Northern New Mexico from the European continents. So, you know, we, in some cases, we celebrate Thanksgiving in 1598 in July, way before the pilgrims celebrated it, with the turkeys and...
In November.
Whatever, cranberries or whatever. Anyway, you know, just, I think that it's a great idea, and I'd be willing to, willing to talk to some of the teachers that are involved in the history. Do you still have, I think they had a MedCha program for some of the Hispanic students, I don't know, they went to Spain at one time.
Yeah, this past summer, there were a group of Taos high school students who went on a cultural immersion trip to Spain for almost two weeks.
Right, and if we can, you know, kind of get their sponsor that took them in there, you know, you know, if you can get me the name, you know, I'd be glad to...
I have it for you now, if you'd like it.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. The woman, one of the major chaperones and organizers of that trip was one of the social studies teachers named Laura Mace, M-A-C-E. This is her last year teaching at the high school, but you're welcome to contact her through the high school.
And she's in the what department?
Social Studies.
Social Studies, yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
You know, Judy, there's one other avenue you may pursue, and it's on his poster, on Moisés's poster, is Chicanos por la Casa, because they deal integratedly with the food hub that Rio Riba County is just opening up, and they're trying to integrate more into Taos. And their main focus is cultural diverse communities such as Taos that still have a strong connection to the land and farming and whatnot, and being that it's a migrant farmer and who Cesar Chavez was, it's a perfect segue into getting them to lend some sponsorship too. And Chicanos por la Casa is a large organization, probably one of the largest in the Southwest.
We're in touch with Casa Program in Adam State University right now to help us plan, you know, to get their students excited about this program. Adam State, Highland University, University of New Mexico, Chicano Studies was just approved at UNM as one of their major graduate programs. And, you know, we also have Santa Fe, the community colleges there, and we have connections in all those. Northern is very much a part of our, you know, I taught there, and, you know, we're getting them involved. I used to be the, I was the sponsor of the Chicano Club there, so, you know, I had a lot of the students that have already graduated are very excited about this.
So, and, Arsenio, are you familiar with Chicanos por la Casa?
No, I haven't.
The organization at all?
I didn't hear, I think that they had, is that the one that David and those people, the poetry group?
No, Chicanos por la Casa is an economic development...
Economic development.
Corporation.
Well, you know, we have the, we work a lot with Liddy Martinez from Lando also, you know, and we also work with the Chicano Studies Poetry Group that presents at different places. A lot of the people that are in our play, for the Pastores, you know, are doing that. You know, one of the things that came out during the committee meeting yesterday is that we thought that during the August program, we would present one of Luis Valdez's plays also, and talked about, maybe talking to the TCA about the possibility of using the theater during that weekend to present a play called No Saco Nada de la Escuela, about, that was written by Luis Valdez during the, during the farmworkers' strike.
Awesome. Well, that's an avenue to pursue, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for recommending that.
We will look them up, you know, just, you know, and, you know, we do, we do have a little bit of cultural sensitivity workshops for, I think, a lot of the people here in Taos need. Every now and then, you know, we show movies and have lectures, poetry at Las Pistoleras in El Prado, that's owned by my daughter, Tessa, and, you know, she'll be very involved with us in the committee.
Yeah, I thought, it was just such good timing, because, you know, we, people come here because of the heritage and the culture here, the adobes, the architecture, and it's who we are, and it was something that touched all of our lives in the past, the migrant work, and Cesar Chavez is one of our heroes, just as much as Martin Luther King is to the civil rights movement. I think he's very important to honor, and we need a cultural revitalization here and to reawaken the sleeping dragon, so I think it's always a good thing.
Well, in tourism, we're always mentioned, okay? Come to Taos and see the Mexicans and the Indians, and, you know, and you will have a wonderful time. But then we come over there, I was at San Jeronimo one day, and there was a tourist standing next to myself and my students from the university, and the lady's looking around all over the place, and says, "I'm looking around," she told, "Tom, I'm looking around, and I haven't seen a single, a single Indian here today." And I looked at her and I said, "We forgot to bring our feathers." So, you know, but, you know, how, you know, you look at people and you say, you know, how do you, what are we supposed to look like, you know? But when it comes to Johnny Griffin and a lot of these tourism state things, you know, we show little flashes of Mexicanos, and we show little flashes of Indians, and everybody comes thinking that their stagecoach is going to be attacked on the way up the canyon, you know, and then a hopper comes and saves them all.
But thank you so much, and anyway, that was the budget I was seeking to get the Towneet House to help with this event.
Please support us.
Councilmember Gonzalez, do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you.
And councilperson?
Mr. Cordova, I have one last question for you, if you'll come back, I'm sorry. Earlier, you mentioned an essay contest, and speaking on behalf of the high school students, that, my ears perk up when I hear that. What are your plans for the essay contest?
Well, you know, we have, you know, my, my wife has her doctorate, and she taught at the high school, she retired from her, her doctorate in English, and she has, you know, volunteered to do a committee to, you know, kind of judge the essay contest, you know, probably about writing about some maybe unsung heroes...
Sure.
...of the movement, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be Cesar Chavez, but, you know, of the Latino movement, you know, that, with the farmworkers and things like that. Or, in fact, you know, take some local people that live here that had that experience of going there, interviewing them, or researching it, you know, just, you know, no plagiarism, but, you know, just...
Yeah, we're also looking at an art contest, elementary, junior high, high school, and we are going to be looking for sponsors who might be willing to pitch in a little bit of money to offer awards to the students who take first, second, third place.
In order to, you know, ensure the success of the contest, I have two recommendations, and the first one is just to contact the head counselor over at the high school and tell him that you're interested, and he'll help you get on the forum. They post a forum online for all the high school students where they can complete a common application and then separate essays for all these sorts of essay contests, and so if you get on that list, then you'll gain a lot of popularity to students at the high school. So a man named Casey Tonry, if you call the high school, he will definitely help you out with that. And if you have any, any funds available for like a small scholarship award, you'll gain three or four times as much interest as a high school student.
We would plan on giving cash prizes...
Right.
And hopefully, you know, we'll get the banks and different places to sponsor those for us, you know.
Great, that's a very good idea.
We've done it before.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you very much.
Councilman Peralta. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cantu, I think that in separating the two projects, I think it's a good idea, and I would suggest, since it's a short period of time for the 31st, that we go ahead and pursue that and bringing the students into that program, and so I would suggest a budget of about $5,000 to help out with that. And then bring me back, probably the first week of April, a plan for the August...
For the August?
...program, and then we can look at that separately. If that is, willing to be accepted by the council, I think that would be something, wouldn't necessarily have to use all of that money, but if you need to do posters or flyers and that sort of thing to the schools, whatever you need to, I would like to have some of that in there outside of the advertising. In the advertising as well, you could also now add to that a schoolchildren's project, that there'd be a special performance for them, advertise that in there.
Yes, and, you know, we do have a lady by the name of Enrique Tabasquez, who lives in San Cristóbal, who was very much involved in the farmworkers, and also Juanita Dominguez , writer across the border in San Luis, who was an actress and translated a lot of the, wrote a lot of the songs for the, for the farmworkers during that particular time, and was also part of Teatro Campesino. To this day, she is part of the Pastores that we present for, we presented for 34 years here in New Mexico, our play, Christmas play, and, you know, she plays the role of Lucifer in those particular things, so... So, she would be an outstanding panel member also. So, you know, it's something that, to bring to light to, that, you know, we were an agricultural community and would like to continue to promote that agriculture in our communities again.
Dr. Cordova and Mr. Cordova, thank you. And consulwoman, thank you for your initiative. And anything that I can do to be of help, I'd be more than honored to participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move along. Item 8B, Taos Sports Alliance, presentation from the TSA regarding the locker room status at the Echo Park. And TSA staff is seeking direction from the mayor and council in regards to the future of the TSA contract. Mr. Pete French, Mr. Mark Yerovitz, and Miss Cat Legere, thank you for coming to our meeting.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, Mr. Manager. Briefly, the update on the locker room is we went through the CES process, received some budgets and some plans, and they were, they were quite out of, much higher than anticipated. So, we went back to the drawing board, working with Steve Kennebeck and Julie Scancy, and we're going to put this out for an RFP proposal, working through the systems. We strongly believe that we had a fiscal responsibility not to spend the entire budget of, that was available, because we think we can get it done for considerably less and still be able to complete the other projects that we want. So, that's the, the RFP is in the process of being written and rewritten by Steve Kennebeck with Julie Scancy's assistance, and it has to go through that process. I've, in terms of the timing of it, as you know, our free process can take a 60 to 90 day process. We could hopefully then begin the building process and have it completed in the fall. I've had a conversation with Jeremy Fishbein, the UNM soccer coach, and he understands that and he's supportive. He said, "If we know it's coming down the line, that will be wonderful, but they will continue to support by coming up to Taos to play games and do some training." They have enjoyed the, he said, "They greatly appreciated the reception that they received up here from everybody in Taos." With that in mind, we have a, two weekends in April, first two weekends in April, which will be our, for the lack of another, soccer events, both weekends. The headliners will be, the men's global team is going to play Denver University, and that's always a big attraction. But we have, we're not going through the whole list, but from that, Adam State, Albuquerque clubs are coming up. And it should be weather permitting, two really good weekends. I hope you'll all be able to come out and maybe, maybe not be on the field, but support all the different teams that come up. This, part of this update, which Mark will address too, is we're into our window of renewal of our current contract, and we are requesting renewal under the same basis that we had last year. We're moving ahead and having other, and we already have plans for several other projects and events. This is the Fondo, the Turkey Trot, which you're familiar with. We've got a, in the works, an Olympic weightlifting type program, and also a, working with a young one doing a mountain bike enduro race. And there are several others. So, we have lots of things in the works that we've been able to do with your support and going out beyond that. And so, I hope to see you out in April. I'm sure it'll be a windy day, but the, the teams will come and play. We've seen them play in snow, so we know they'll, they'll be here. The, part of the return on the investment that comes up, and I think it goes back and it shows what it does for the youth of this community. They've grown a lot, the youth soccer league and all its contingencies. We've got 500-plus kids that are out actively participating. It's keeping them off the streets, it's teaching them leadership, it's teaching them loyalty, and it creates some bonds that's going to last a lifetime. And as you all know from the variety of studies that've come out, having one child not in a gang-related event or having to go through all the different counseling and social services saves a community $30,000 to $40,000 a year. And that is not often reflected in a bottom-line dollar basis. But I think you all understand and realize that the investment into the youth of this community is what's going to keep this town and this county vibrant and alive into the future. Without it, we'll, you know, we might be like some community in Florida where everyone is over 82, and not many people are moving in. So, I think it's, you know, the continued investment is well worth it in every manner possible. Mark, would you like to say a few words?
I don't know. Councilmembers, Mayor Protem, Mr. Manager, I like to stand when I talk, if you don't mind, because I like for the blood to rush in the right direction, to my feet where I'll speak a little less. Just want to say a few words. I want to talk a little bit about our long-range plans and what we see for the community of Taos. And as you know, it's bigger than the town of Taos, it's Taos County. We've been constantly been trying to figure out what's our long-range plans, our exit strategy from being supported just by the town of Taos. And we are moving forward with going through the process of putting together a Taos County-wide district, sports and recreation, and adventure tourism is what we're dealing with. I recently came from a meeting with the Del Norte Trails Coalition, where they're building a trail from K-Taos through Toseco, through the Pueblo land. And been looking at the reinvigoration and reinvention of Gallup and what they've done over the last 10 years. And you're familiar with Moab, Utah, Slick Rock, outdoor adventure tourism. We're going to be meeting with some of the officials from Cuesta to help them recreate Cuesta into one of the gateways of the new national monument. Our goal is economic development through sports, recreation, and tourism. And it's in addition to the arts community, it's in addition to the ski valley, it's just another leg of economic development. We've seen it in other places, we've seen the numbers. We can bring people here for that. Whether or not they spend money in the art galleries, I can't help with that, but we need to have the numbers. Recently, we had a, over the holiday break, I had a conversation with someone from the arts community that was against what we were doing because we were competing for the advertising dollars for the art community. And after a long conversation, he did seem to change his mind. He said, "Well, yeah, I work at Nambe, and when Brian has his hockey tournaments, our place is full of parents from out of town during the hockey tournament buying, spending money at the Nambe place. I guess I do understand what you're talking about. Getting the people here will generate the sales. It's about numbers." As Pete mentioned, we would, we'd like to get some youthful exuberance back into Taos. We don't want to gentrify our place and just, just become an aged population. We know the brain drain's going on, we know the young families are leaving Taos in droves. I've seen the statistics on our population, older every minute, imported wealth, people moving here, and our kids are moving out in droves. We'd like to reverse that by giving them the community that they really want. And that's part of our long-term plan. And this district is about a long-range plan where changes in administrations and politics, we know you're, you're full of problems that you have to deal with from the past and current administration, what's going on with potholes and unemployment and deferred maintenance and all kinds of emergencies. We'd like to take the higher road and look at long-range planning for this community to add some more spice to what we already have, natural assets here in Taos that are greater than they have in Durango or Telluride or Gallup for sure. I don't want to insult anybody. So, our goal is to get to that point somewhere in the next year. We're working on it full-time to get this district created so that it's countywide and not just the town supporting all the members of the county. This is a community-wide effort. So, I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. We don't have anything formal to present on the district, but we'll be working with your staff, with Mr. Kennebeck, et cetera, to find out what are the assets, what needs improvements, where are our missing tennis courts, how can we fund those things, what more trails do we need, more bike paths, all of the things that the community really wants. And we're going to hopefully get there in the next year or so. We're working on it full-time. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anything else from the presenters? Ms. Legere? Thank you. Consulman Gonzalez.
Mark, what's your current operating budget? I guess, what have we funded to in the past?
Seventy-five thousand. That's the level it's been at the last two years.
When we, Rick, when we look through the budget, are we still adequate to fund at that level? I mean, as of right now?
Well, that's what's in the current budget, but obviously we haven't started the new process. So, we were looking for some early guidance in speaking with the TSA. I think they didn't want to wait till the last minute till we finalized the budget. They wanted some sense based on, last year, there were concerns expressed by council as to whether you had an interest in continuing, continuing at that level, or I think last year there was some discussion about phasing down that funding over the next couple of years. So, I think it's, it's less about our budget, more that they're looking for some long-term guidance that they can plan around, knowing that they only have a few months of funding left. And we do have that 120-day notification requirement.
So, based on our contribution to TSA in the past, where do you guys sit with regards to the, to the funding level?
We'd like the 75,000.
Okay, and worst-case scenario, if you couldn't have the 75.
Okay, 125.
Not going up.
You need to look at your budgets and then say, is there a number we can work within? If it was a lesser amount, it might be we would have to perform fewer services.
Well, and that's, I guess that's my concern, is saying, what is that, that cure-all number? Because if 75 keeps you whole and sufficient and operating at the levels that you're operating at now, which is what I would hope and anticipate to see and grow, does this council taking you down to 50 or 55 put a hindrance on that and make things extremely difficult for you?
What we would do is, I would suggest, is that we could, if we could find the time to work with Mr. Bellis and talk about the numbers and what's adequate and what's not, we could come up with some better numbers. We're looking for guidance from, from you today in terms of, just in terms of our long-range existence, and we have to plan long-range to get these things to happen. And whether or not you're cutting us off entirely or funding us fully, we have to have a sense of that before your final budget hearing, so we're just trying to get some guidance. So, I don't have an answer specifically, though.
So, Rick, if you would just sit down with them and, I guess, see where we're at budget-wise and see what TSA is looking for as well, too. I mean, I'm committed to funding, so I just need to know at what level.
Consulman, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
We'll bring that back to you on the meeting on the 24th, so you have plenty of time.
Okay.
Consulman Peralta.
Just a quick question. How much over the last year have, has the TSA raised in sponsorships or that funding?
In addition to the 75?
Because I was hoping to see that in your report, but there wasn't anything there.
I'm going to give you a rounded number, about 15,000.
From?
Other sources, and that's not, that, make it about 20,000, because that's not counting the larger stack cycle from the county. But from, from the Turkey Trot, from the Fondo event, from...
Grants.
And we got a grant from the Community Foundation and from the Taos Ridathon that'll happen, end of this month, actually.
But you haven't received anything from sponsors like Coca-Cola or?
No.
Anybody like that?
No.
Yes, Choice Wireless.
Well, Choice Wireless through the last cycle, yes. They gave us several thousand dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Legere, Mr. French, Mr. Yerovitz, thank you. I'm also noticing in your projection for 21516, in the booklet that you had published and got to us, that you are stepping down in 1516, the town's portion, and increasing other areas. I'm really happy to see that with your projection, revenues have increased and expenses have also, but your net operating income has increased in the projection. I think the suggestion that you get together with Mr. Bellis, and perhaps we can bring this to some kind of study and conclusion on the 24th. There are a number of alternatives out there. I think in reviewing your contract, I noticed that it states in the very first paragraph that the town desires to promote sports, et cetera, in the region. And so this is truly more than just a town effort. And Mr. Yerovitz and I are in discussions, as I am with the council, about perhaps the idea of a summit. So, there's some exciting things that could be happening, but there's certainly no guarantee. I'm grateful that we're looking at this now than, rather than in June. So, if you could schedule an appointment with Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor Protem, if it's acceptable to our youth council member, I think it might be an interesting experience for him to be part of those discussions, too.
Yeah, absolutely. On several occasions, I've asked the mayor about plans for recreational facilities and the expansion of those kind of programs, like the Turkey Trot, which you came and spoke to us earlier this, this year, Ms. Legere. I would love to be a part of all those conversations if possible.
Thank you. Any other questions from consular matters of concern on this issue? Mr. Yerovitz.
Can we actually get a day with Mr. Bellis right now while we're here?
Sure.
Because he's very busy.
Yeah, 2:00 next Tuesday.
Is that Tuesday, the 17th?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
What time?
2:00.
To your, your office?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Seventeenth, was it?
Yep.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item 9, citizens' farm. Citizens wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so for five minutes. No action may be taken. Is there anyone wishing to speak this afternoon? Mr. Cordova.
It's not about potholes.
Thank you.
I think we're just one hole pothole in town anyway.
Thought we were still having that conversation.
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, there's a lot of excitement going on in the different projects that we're working on in town. And, you know, I see, you know, the Sports Alliance people just talk to you, and I was on the school board when we negotiated with the town, you know, about, about giving that property up for a 40-year lease or whatever. And, you know, just, it'd be a shame to lose that, you know, and it's something that is really needed in the community. So, I just want to say that I totally support that. Also, you know, as we do the Taos Historical Walking Tour, stepping up tomorrow, I have know, as we do the Taos Historical Walking Tours, stepping up tomorrow, I have a group coming in from India, Denmark, and University of New Mexico. So, if you're going to see a lot of people around town tomorrow as we do a walking tour and a tour of the bridge and things like that. So, you know, I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you. You know, I don't know if you want to go on. Our tour is mostly a lot of oral history in the Taos community. And, you know, I'd like to invite you, you know, just, I talk about history of different things, including town councils and county commissions and things like that, you know. So, you know, but I'd like to extend, to give you guys anytime you want, a free tour of Taos, you know, as, through the eyes of my ancestors and myself, you know. So, that goes for also our student councilor, you know. We can do that. We've always done tours for the schools at one time or another. But we also, you know, we are going to have thirty people from Denmark, India, and UNM walking around tomorrow. So, maybe, I promise not to make them walk on the potholes. No liability to the town, but I'd like to extend that invitation to all of you.
Arsene, have we formalized a spot for you to operate out of on those walking tours?
What's that?
Have we formalized a spot for you?
I just do it. I mean, you know, I kind of meet them there at the park, you know, at the Kit Carson Park, you know, just in front of the TCA. That's where they started. And, you know, we do our publicity with AAA magazine, a lot of the national magazines.
Does that work for you, the park?
Yeah, well, you know, we do a lot of freebies for the travel writers. So, they write about us in the national papers and things like that about the tour. And, you know, we've gotten some real good reviews.
But does the park location work for you as a good starting point, or is there somewhere more centralized?
It's a pretty good starting point, you know. I just, you know, once in a while, depending if I don't have too many where they're staying at, you know, I might meet them there, you know, start from. But the park, we do the cemetery and then the plaza in Lee Two Street area. It's a two-hour tour.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. This one is an arranged tour. Tomorrow, it's going to, taking them to the bridge first at noon. And then, we're going to, then after the bridge, we'll probably start about one o'clock there in front of the TCA. So, if you guys want to come down and meet some of the visitors that come to Taos and find out, you know, what they, they've heard about our communities, things like that. I think we have international fame. Wear your feathers.
Thanks, Arsene.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Any other citizens wishing to express their concerns? Very good. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Items in this consent agenda below have been reviewed by the mayor, and the mayor has placed these items on the consent agenda for the purpose of voting on all items within one vote. Item 10A, Resolution 15-12, an intergovernmental transfer of personal property. Discussion, consideration, possible approval of Resolution 15-12, approving the intergovernmental transfer of a 2006 BMW motorcycle to Taos County. Item 10B, Resolution 15-14, Declaration of Town of Taos Surplus Property. Discussion and consideration possible approval of Resolution 15-14, approving the disposition of vehicles, a mobile home, and other miscellaneous equipment, materials owned by the Town of Taos pursuant to the NMSA Section 3-54-2-A. Out-of-state travel, this is a consent item 10C, out-of-state travel for Lieutenant Dave Maggio. Consideration possible approval of out-of-state travel to allow Town of Taos Police Department Lieutenant Dave Maggio to attend the 31st International Symposium on Child Abuse in Huntsville, Alabama, scheduled for March 23rd to the 27th of this year. And finally, item D, Resolution 15-15, a budget adjustment request. Discussion, consideration, and possible approval of Resolution 15-15, budget adjustment request to lodger's tax fund, decrease unreserved fund balance by $37,887, and transfer this amount out to the lodger's tax promotional fund to cover for additional marketing expenditures in the amounts stated above. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, before we take a vote on this, just for purposes of clarification, all of these items should be approval only since they're consent. There is no discussion. It's a straight vote up and down to either approve them or not. So, there should be no, nothing in the agenda to say discussion and consideration. It is strictly approval or disapproval unless we remove it from the consent agenda. So, your language in there should be approval, okay? So, that's the way this should read on all of these items in any consent agenda moving forward. Mr. Mayor, I remove approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
No discussion.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes. Item 11A, public hearings. Transfer of ownership of liquor license Plaza de Coloras LLC. Consideration and possible approval of transfer of ownership of liquor license number 2660/, application number 940696, for Plaza de Coloras LLC DBA Coyote Club located at 330 Paseo de Pueblo Sur, Suite A. And I'd like to call up Mr. Perea and Mr. Cordova just for a simple question or two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council, Mr. Manager, and staff. We stand for any questions. This is a simple transfer. I have with me Mr. Jim Perea. I think the language maybe need to be corrected. It's not DBA Coyote Club. I'm leasing, currently, Casa Los Cordova is currently leasing to Coyote Club, pending the transfer of license to Mr. Perea's company, and therefore, the lease will transfer to his name. So, I originally bought the license from Mr. Perea's company, and now it's, he exercised his first right of refusal in this, so it's returning back to its original owner. So, we appreciate your consideration, and we stand for any questions.
Excuse me, Mayor, councilmembers. I just wanted to mention that the application actually says that Coyote Club is the DBA. So, I'm not sure if that needs to be corrected at the state level because the state's the one that submitted it to the council with their prior approval. So, I don't know. Mayor Protam, Han has the application in front of him, so I don't know if you want to check it out. It's attached as well to the packet.
And this may be something that the state, since it's being leased, that the license belongs to Mr. Perea, and since it's being leased, the license has been doing business as Coyote Club. It may be just a procedural thing that the, that alcohol and gaming, we can call our, the attorney just to get clarification. Would you like to do that if he likes? Let me make a real quick call.
Renee, do we need to swear them in prior to hearing any, being that it's a public hearing?
Yeah, probably.
So, thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Cordova and Mr. Perea. It is a bit confusing. This is a public hearing. And so, I will open this meeting up for public comment at this time.
Seeing none, we'll move back to the council. Comments, concerns from the council?
We just need to swear them in real quick, Mr. Mayor Protam.
Councilman Gonzalez is asking that they be sworn in.
Yes, I'll do that. Mr. Perea, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is a truth?
I do.
Mr. Cordova, can I swear you in?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is a truth?
Yes.
Yes, and it's a procedural, according to Linda Aiken, the attorney that is dealing with the transfer, so it is correct.
Correct the way it is?
Yes.
Move for approval?
Second. Call for the vote, madam.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes. And if I could call, pending council's approval, just for a minute to sign that document, and we'll carry on with the meeting. Is that okay?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor Protam, if I could just appreciate the staff during all this whole process for your cooperation, and they were great to work with. And during my ownership of the license, I just would like to thank the Town of Taos for all of their support as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Jim.
Approval from the council to come back in to session, not that we really left. But item 11B, public hearings, ordinance 1501 regarding the 2015 International Fire Code. And I'd like to call Mr. Eric Oysen up and the chief.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council, Mr. Manager, Youth Council. Before you is ordinance 15-01 regarding the 2015 International Fire Code.
Is this, I'm sorry, chief, was these, these are the ones that we heard maybe about a month ago?
About a month ago.
Is there, so this is a public hearing regarding this proposed ordinance? Is there anyone, anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? If not, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Mr. Eric and Chief.
Mayor Protam, members of the council, we stand for any questions, concerns?
Councilman Peralta.
Yeah, one of the things we talked about the last meeting on this was the International Fire Code, which you said was a booklet this big. Where do you have it in the ordinance that it's attached?
Well, we have it available today on a PDF.
And the language should say that by reference, the ordinance, the code is attached to this ordinance in its entirety.
Can you comment, Mr. Lopez?
My recollection is, my recollection is there is some reference to it here that it is attached, but I'll have to look for it.
It's stated in the header that we are adopting the 2015, but I don't believe that it uses the exact language attached.
Yeah, it's paragraph 1A, and it says there is adopted by reference with the exceptions and changes set forth in sub-paragraph E below the International Code Council's 2015 International Fire Code for the purposes of, and then it goes on. So, it's adopted by reference. And then, paragraph B says, "The 2015 International Fire Code is incorporated by reference into this town code as fully set out herein and shall be controlled with respect to the town except as modified in sub-paragraph E."
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? What are the wishes of the council?
Move for approval.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Han?
Yes. Item 12, matters from staff. Resolution 1513, establishing fire department fee schedule. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of Resolution 1533, establishing the fee schedule for fire code and life safety inspections and plan reviews. Chief Gonzalez and Eric, once again.
Mayor Protam, members of the council, we have never charged for any inspections, whether it be new business or annual fire inspections, nor have we ever charged for plan reviews. This schedule was, it was requested that I put this together and bring it forward to the council to cover overhead that does go into these matters. The schedule that was attached to the resolution are numbers that I was able to find by visiting with several different code enforcement divisions throughout the state and as well as Southern Colorado to see a general area of what they are charging, how they are charging, and the different aspects they look at. When putting this schedule together, I tried to keep it on the lower end of what other people were charging. As we feel it will cover our costs, it will cover, you know, what does go into providing all of these services. We also don't want it to become encumbering to the businesses that are starting up and continuing in town.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Mr. Bellis?
If I could ask a question, just so that we can create a record here. Do you perform plan reviews for the county planning department at any time?
Mayor Protam, members of the council, at times, at their request, we will perform plan reviews, especially when it's concerning developments that are coming up in the county that our department does respond to or will respond to.
And do you also perform onsite inspections to be sure that any of the plans that were approved by the county are carried out to meet your fire code specific recommendations?
Yes, sir. Any, if they do request that we go through plan reviews or go through any movements concerning any developments within our response district within the county, we do follow-up inspections to ensure that things are moving along correctly.
And given that, I would ask, in being fair, that when these, while this is a municipal fee schedule, if municipal fire department carries out any of these activities consistent with the fee schedule, that they, that the council give them approval to be able to charge those fees to the, not to the county, but to the applicants as part of their review process? And I do understand that will probably require us to come back with an MOU.
Councilman Gonzalez.
I do have just, just some concerns with regards to the fee schedule and how, you know, you mentioned over the, encumbrance to business and, and home occupancy and whatnot. You know, their, business owners are already paying for a business license, which is thirty-five bucks for a piece of paper. They walk in, they receive, and here's your business license. So, I real hesitant to see another fee tacked onto that, on top of that, for another twenty-five bucks to go make sure they're, I mean, and I know you guys go and do it with regards to that. I just, I don't see government being a money-making enterprise. I mean, it's, it's a government by the people for the people. I mean, they pay through their insurance rates to the fire fund to provide some of the services that you guys do. So, I'm not 100% sold on, on the fee schedule when it comes to home occupancy and business, you know, charges. I think a lot of that is absorbed within, I mean, if that's the case, then just raise the, raise the fee for the business license and, you know, you guys hash it out there. But I think to have to make multiple, you know, expenditures to different places, I mean, especially on startup business, and then they're going to have to go through this year after year after year. year after year after year. I just... I guess, is it that encumbrance? Is there that many inspections that you guys would need to charge a $25 fee to do so?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Gonzalez, last month I did...
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight inspections last month. I don't remember the exact number year-to-date at this point, but last month was 48 that was presented to the... For the monthly update. And right now, it's me solely that does inspections, plan reviews, code reviews, and any meetings that surround this. So it's not... I don't want to say that it's cumbersome, but it is busy. Though, please, any comment, concerns that you do have regarding the schedule, we would like back.
Go ahead. Let me think on that for a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Two things. One, in response to Mr. Bellas' question about when you're doing something for the county, I don't see anything in this that would restrict you from charging for county inspections, because it says for any inspection. It doesn't say whether there are any silly limits or not. So I think that's taken care of. But the second question I have is, are you required under the code that we just passed to do an annual business inspection?
Let me... One second, sir. Yes. If you remember last meeting when I did the initial presentation, we covered that ISO has brought back new formats regarding code enforcement and inspections for fire departments within municipal jurisdictions. And under those guidelines, they want to see a inspection per business annually. So our goal moving forward with this is to cover a business inspection or a fire inspection per business annually, although we would like to do two annually for larger spaces concerning, you know, educational schools, things of that nature, that have large numbers of people and can become high risk. But yes, it is covered under the IFC as well as the guidelines that we operate under in NFA and ISO that we need to perform annual inspections.
So doing these annual inspections, does that create a better rating for insurance, or is it just something that the international code wants you to do because they like it?
Mayor Protem, councilmembers... Councilmember Peralta, yes. The new section within the ISO's rating schedule has... I can't remember the exact percentage of what the score is for the overall score, but part of that is looking directly at number of inspections performed and the type of occupancies that they're being performed at. So yes, it will and can affect ISO ratings throughout our jurisdiction.
Do you know by how much? Was we going to go from a four to a three, or are we going to... You know, I think we're a four right now, right?
We're a four.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem, councilmembers... Councilmember Peralta, I can't tell you exactly how many points it will move us. To be... It's almost impossible to get the numbers that the insurance underwriters utilize to write policies that will show where they will move insurance ratings to. I have some that we were able to get at last year's chief's conference in Ria dosso, and I'm still in the process of putting together a fairly lengthy PowerPoint presentation that will cover everything that ISO governs and concerns with fire departments and our responses. But being able to gain the extra points that are now outlined in the FSRS concerning inspections will definitely help our move towards a three.
The reason I'm asking the question, though, is because if we increased, improve our rating, you know, that'll offset the cost, in a sense, for those businesses that get annual inspections. So I'm just trying to see how...
And that's our overall goal, sir, is to reduce our rating to help them with their insurance premiums, and also, in the long term, assist us in our funding through the state.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may, Counselor Peralta, the ISO rating is rated on different aspects: dispatch, water supply, our fire department records and run response. So it's not just our part of it. It's as far as that goes into the ISO. Once we get ready for... To get him back in for a new rating, we got to make sure that our water supply is in place, our dispatches is... You know, so many dispatchers, Esper NFA, 10, 12, or 12, whatever it is. But yeah, but that is one big part of the ISO, is our record-keeping and our inspections on there. But it's not the whole thing in one, because of the other... Like you said, the water supply and the dispatch, that's also involved in ISO.
So on a normal residence, you don't do any inspection either of plans or when the home is built, correct? The way I'm looking at the fee schedule.
Mayor Protem, council... Councilmember Peralta, no, sir. We do not do inspections on private occupancies, private homes, just commercial facilities where customers, you know, people from the community will come in and visit, you know, your old business, for example.
So residential sprinkler plan that related to a home occupation business, is that what that is? Or how does that play into what the requirement is? I'm just curious.
Mayor Protem, council... Councilmember Peralta, yes. That is the only aspect that actually translates back into plan review. When it comes to residential plans, the only times we really get into plan review is either for developments within our jurisdiction, or if it was a residence over 4,000 square feet that then required a residential sprinkler system. Even then, the only aspect we looked at was just that the sprinkler system was designed in accordance with NFPA 13R and that it met those requirements.
So you don't inspect to see if it was actually put in?
After the fact, we would do a finalized test and inspection and acceptance test of the system. Yes, sir.
So anything over 4,000 square feet does require a sprinkler? Is that what you're saying?
In a residential-style home, new construction, yes, sir.
It's a new one for me.
Then I'll keep it under 4,000.
Councilman Gonzalez, as I understand it, your concern is mostly about the home occupancy business?
Home occupancy and the business, just because of the fees that are already associated. And, you know, just as a previous business owner, those fees come up pretty quickly, and I'm not opposed to paying a business license, but, I mean, the argument that you'll get out of the larger business community is why am I paying a $35 business license fee to just hang on my wall? It's a piece of paper. And really, outside of the services provided from the city, I mean, that's really all they're doing, you know, is coming in, grabbing the business license. They're issuing the CRS number for us, and then the state takes over everything else. So, you know, that's where my concern lies, is, you know, they're going to pay yearly 35 plus another 25 for re-inspection. That's 55 bucks they're giving to the city for what?
Could I ask a question, then? I'll be honest with you, obviously, I haven't read the entire 2015 code. But typically, itinerant vendor wouldn't involve a structure, and in the past, home occupancy has been defined by the local land use code or zoning code as opposed to the international building code. Are they specified in the 2015 code?
Mayor Protem, councilmembers... Manager Bellas, home occupancy vendor... Or home occupancy is, itinerant vendor is not. It's classified under what would be, you know, a hot dog stand, food cart, those types of small businesses. But those are not directly outlined, but we do have to inspect them, depending on how they are designed and set up. But if there is any cooking appliance, any power, natural gas, anything of that nature, they are required to have inspections.
And Chief?
Sir.
Maybe for the council, it would be helpful if you could give a very brief description of what you're trying to do with the restructuring of the department? Because as I understand it from our discussions, one of the things is that as the amount of commercial businesses and inspections increases, we're really taking a full-time firefighter now who really is going to be sort of a fire marshal, fire inspector, just to do plan review, just to keep on track with the inspections. So that the thought of some of these fees is to actually take care of that inspector without taking a firefighter off the street that at some point we're going to have to put back on just to keep up with our minimum demand.
Mr. Mayor Protem, Mr. Bellas, that is correct. Last few years, I've been meeting with managers, previous manager and the manager before that, as well as HR, to try and get some kind of organizational chart going within the paid staff at the department. Right now, it's just the administrative chief and inspector, and we created, I believe, two years ago, an engineer's position, then other than that, it's flatlined. So I've got five other firefighters that have no way of climbing up. And in the meantime, this inspection is taking away, like Mr. Bellas said, a full-time firefighter, pretty much keeping them busy all day long, doing inspections. And when the alarm does sound, he does leave the inspection area, of course, to go, you know, fight the fire. But eventually, if this organizational chart does happen, I would like to add the fire marshal's position back in, so he has more enforcement in these subjects that we're talking now, and bring a... And that would give one of the other guys an opportunity to test out, to be a fire inspector, which Ovi is set at now, just to help with the inspections, to ease the load on it. Right now, he's doing inspections five days a week, basically, on top of different, you know, DRC meetings and different meetings that are required through the inspections that he does. So that is our plan, is these fees, we still haven't set down where these fees are going to go or anywhere, or where we would like them to go to help offset some of the costs or the time involved, I should say. And what we're asking on this organizational chart is not for additional firemen at this time, just a place for the current staff to be able to move up the ladder with, you know, throughout their career, instead of staying in one position for 20 years. And eventually, if the time does come, we will present that we do need more staff as well, and this town is growing.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kantu?
Couple of questions I was wondering. You guys, what's the fee now, like, for the alarms? Let's say the alarms go off and what's the fee for that?
Mayor Protem, councilmembers... Councilmember Kantu, currently, you're asking what the fee is, is there is a false alarm that's happened multiple times to go back? There really wasn't a defined fine schedule for that until just now, when you passed the new ordinance, and then that ordinance has addressed that. So the first, I believe, three alarms, two alarms are free. Yes, the first two alarms are free, starting the third alarm is $50, the fourth alarm will then be $50. The fifth and sixth alarms will then be $100, and then the seventh is 500.
How do you go about charging these and collecting the fines on them? Educating?
During the process of writing this, I spoke with the municipal judge, as well as Chief Weaver, and it will be processed the same way a traffic citation would, although it will not be, you know, criminal, anything like that. It'll be done under a civil aspect. So the schedule that I had attached to the documentation with the ordinance adoption showed the... All the fines for the different areas that we will be looking at. So those will be notated on the second, or, you know, further inspections afterwards. Those will be written down. They will be given a citation very similar to one that somebody's given for a traffic stop, and then that will be inputted into the software and sent to the court.
I think why... I know we get, like, monthly reports from, let's say, the property meters or from municipal courts.
Excuse me, Mayor Protem, councilmember? Is it on? I can barely hear you.
Kick your wires a little bit.
Got loose wires. Anyway, would it be possible for you to maybe give the council a report on the fees that you do collect?
We do not collect any fees at this time.
Yeah, we do not collect any fees at this time. Moving forward with the ordinance that you had already approved, if we do fine anyone and have to collect any, you know, any fines that are collected through the inspection process, that we can definitely report on. The only fees that would be associated with anything is the resolution that's in front of you now for inspections.
I...
And if that does get passed at some point, we'll be more than happy to give you a report on that as well.
Okay. On the business for over 9,000 square feet, is there a... I'm not real familiar. A lot of buildings that size that you inspect? That's a steep fee.
Mayor Protem, council... Members of the council, councilmember Kantu, yes. Oh, most of the mercantile spaces, Walmart, Bells, grocery stores, things of that nature, are... Many hotels are quite large. They take a long time to get through.
So they're like corporations, huh?
Mostly, yes.
I see. Okay.
Oh, and Mr. Lopez did catch me. I wanted to... One thing, bring up one thing. Under the schedule that we were discussing, Councilmember Gonzalez, the section that home occupancy business is under, the business or building CEO inspections, that is a one-time fee for new businesses or new buildings that are just entering. The section below that would be the annual fire inspection fees. So the top section was just for their first issuance of their business license, for new businesses only.
So couldn't we... I mean, as part of their going through the application of receiving a business license, couldn't we give them the first one as a freebie and then on the yearly, collect for the fire inspection fees?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, there is no yearly for home occupation.
No, I'm talking business.
Oh, on businesses? There is a business annual inspection fee, which I have on the screen. 1,500 square feet or less would be $20 a year, and then it goes up from there.
Mr. Mayor, that could be a home occupation, because home occupation is considered to be a business. So anything under 1,500 square feet, you could have a home business that would be 4,000 square feet, and that would require an annual inspection. So I'm assuming that there's an annual inspection if there is a business located in that residence.
Well, Ovi and I discussed that. I believe that under the... Since it's not listed separately as it is above, so the code inspection is listed, home occupancy business, $25, and then businesses in 3,000 feet or less are $75. That's the initial code inspection. I would believe that a fair reading of this resolution would be that, where it says below business space size, it says it doesn't say home occupation business, that it would not be included as an annual fee, because it is included above, but it's listed separately, and so it's not included below because it's not listed separately.
Well, if that's the intention, I think the exclusion should be in the ordinance or the resolution. But, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. In the inspection of itinerant vendors, $25, would that apply to stands for the fiestas or for a arts and crafts fair? I mean, how are we differentiating or are we differentiating between an itinerant vendor who's up on Paseo along the street and an itinerant vendor who is coming in in a organized program, I guess is one way to put it?
Mayor Protem, councilmembers... Councilmember Peralta, yes, they would fall under the itinerant vendor aspect, as that is exactly what they are. Anybody that is cooking within a cart or stand, anything with natural gas, greasing vapors, any type of fire threat is subject to an inspection to ensure that they are operating safely.
What about lights?
I'm sorry?
Lights? Strong lights in a cart? Let's say, for example, you have a fiesta booth, and you've got lighting, night lighting, does that come under an inspection? There are itinerant vendors. I mean, there's no description of what an itinerant vendor is, so I'm assuming it's anyone who is selling in a non-permanent location.
Location. It is not defined clearly within the resolution, no, but it is mainly pertaining towards food vendors, although other vendors that do have nighttime lighting, it isn't... Their lighting systems are inspected to make sure that they aren't running... systems are inspected to make sure that they aren't running, you know, five lights off of a single extension cord.
Okay, so right now, for the fiestas, each, what you consider an itinerant vendor is charged $25 to inspect them?
They would be at this point, yes, sir.
Previously?
Previously, no. There are no fees whatsoever currently.
Is there any fees, do we know, being charged to the booth space, other than directly to the fiesta council, or to a promoter of a arts and crafts fair that we charge? Is there anything?
Just a special business license.
$10, not as a fire department, no.
Not as a fire, but is the town just a special business license?
And is that used to offset the cost for them to inspect them, or is it just an administrative fee?
It's just an administrative fee.
Any other questions from the council?
Marietta, can I ask you, what do we, what's our revenues on business registrations?
I'd say $45,000 here, approximately.
That goes all back to general fund?
Yes.
And your fees would go directly into fire fund?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Gonzalez, no, sir, it wouldn't go into fire fund, that has to be kept solely and separate for reasons through the PRC. Into, we had spoken, and at this point, we're speaking that the first year's worth of, you know, fees, fines, et cetera, go into a special equipment replacement program fund. So we do have a good number of parts, pieces of the different equipment that does need to be replaced, but that would also give us the time to look at a year's worth of work, see what it amounts to, and be able to judge it and move forward from there.
That's not in the resolution, so it all goes to the general fund?
At this point, yes, sir, it would.
There's no special fund designated?
No, sir, not yet.
Eric, and Chief Gonzalez, I'd like to thank you. I know as a small proprietor, working out of my home, in a social work practice, your service, Eric, coming over to the house to inspect the office and such, has been very helpful. Over the course of a year, furniture moves, stuff changes, and it's always a wonderful service for you to come in and give it a fresh look. As the previous owner of a much larger, well-known business here in town that uses alcohol in the extraction process for remedios, that kind of service is invaluable. And I, as a small business owner, and once an owner of the herb company, fully support this and feel, I was shocked, the first time I called the fire department to ask you to come over to inspect the house before I could start seeing clients, I was shocked that I didn't have to pay anything. I thought, oh, my gosh, you know? So I very much value the service, just from a safety perspective. Second thing is, as a social worker, going through credentialing, and in third-party reimbursement, Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, they all come into your, all offices are inspected, and you've got to show that permit, not only your business permit and CRS information with the state, but your fire permit, or you can't practice, you're not credentialed. So if it weren't for you, I would not have been in business. And I'm shocked that my business could not actually pay the fire departments. So what that means is, in May, or whenever those damn booths are out on the corners, and everybody's asking for...
October.
Right, oh, October, yeah, there you go. So I got to make up for it then. So I'm very glad to see a fee structure in place. The other thing is, as a citizen, I have recourse. If I get ticketed, I can always go to Judge Chavez and say, Judge, you know, here are the extenuating circumstances, I could even get Eric to state, yeah, Mr. Hunt's working on it, we're not there yet, I'm going to re-inspect in a month, or something like that. So I'm very grateful for all of your efforts around this. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I hope that the judge double fines you. That could be. Especially if it were me. That's a privilege of being on the council.
Double jeopardy, yes.
You're right, you're right.
Ovi?
I think there's a couple of cleanups that need to be done in here. One is that if you are really requesting a special fund, that be presented to the council as part of this, so that we can see that there is a, it doesn't get thrown into pothole filling.
Wait a minute. Although that would save our equipment maintenance as well.
Well, maybe we'll get you out there to fill potholes, then.
We can fill them with water.
That, and I think there's a couple of little cleanup languages that we probably should have. I, I'm a little concerned about the itinerant vendor, because I think there should be a definition for that someplace, and make sure that it meets your needs, and if we need to change that definition in any way, we should probably do that, so that it captures those inspections that you need, and not be left kind of vaguely to, whether it's somebody's got a stove, or they don't have a stove, you know? It should be something that says, if you have certain things that could be a fire hazard, then we have a responsibility to inspect it. Because I can tell you, I've seen some strung lights on booths that give me a lot of heartache. And I imagine they do you too, so. As a matter of that, you should be able, they should be able to tell you what they intend to put up, and how, and for that reason, you're either responsible to inspect or not inspect it, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I may, make one more statement on that as well, is on this fee schedule that we proposed here today, if you notice on the bottom one there, on the top section, open burning permit, we had some discussion within our department as far as where we should charge for burn permits. We all came to an agreement that we don't want to charge for burn permits, because we want to know when people are burning, what they're burning, and they're really good, the community is really good at coming in and doing what they're supposed to do, coming in and getting their burn permits from our department, and that way, we can monitor, if we would have put some kind of fee in there, who knows what they're going to burn, and where they're going to burn.
What about the fact that, okay, so there's no charge for the burn permit, what about the non-obtaining of burn permit? Is there a fine?
Mr. Mayor?
I thought I saw something in there for that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Gonzalez, it's $300.
Mr. Mayor, since you bring that up, I'm just wondering whether or not there shouldn't be a pre-inspection of the area where somebody's going to be burning, to make sure that they've cleared all the debris away from the area that they're going to set up the fire? Because that's been an issue, for example, when the Lama fire happened, you know, individual, you know, lit his trashcan on fire, but didn't clear the area around it, and therefore, it caused an enormous fire. If that had been inspected prior to that, just to show them that, yes, you need to have a 10-foot or 20-foot area around your fire, and you have your fire hose, or your water hose out, something like that, and you can't leave it unattended, that would probably save you guys a lot of trouble.
And, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Peralta, we do go over the burn permit process with every individual that comes in for a burn permit, doesn't mean that they follow it, but we do specifically go over, it can only be so big, and we do get calls, and normally, the calls that we do get towards a burn permit is the smoke filling the neighbors' houses up, and stuff like that. We, I think with our education, we have had not run as many burn permit fires that, you know, we have to go because they got out of control, they do, it does happen, though. As far as going in and inspecting the other place, I don't know if Ovi has any time with all the other inspections, no. But it's all over the county, I mean, it's our response area, too. If it's, you know, strictly just the town, it wouldn't be as bad, but it's pretty much our response area, from the horseshoe to, to...
The bridge. Thank you.
Pot Creek.
What are the wishes of the council?
I'd like to see the revisions made in there, before we approve it, and then also, just maybe we can sit down and look at some considerations with regards to the business license and the annual inspection fee. I don't know if there's a way to offset that, Marietta, because I'm starting to hear it a little more, that people pay for a $35 piece of paper to hang on their wall. So, we can just look at that, I'm not opposed to the fire inspection fee, I'd rather see that than a business license fee that...
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that you bring it back at the next council meeting for, with the revisions for final approval.
Mr. Manager?
Councilman Gonzalez, would you be acceptable to us looking at reducing the business license to the actual estimated cost, say, whether it was $7, $10, and so that net, there's no increase to the homeowner here?
Yeah, I'd really like to do that.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
And, Councilman Peralta, your suggestion once more for the record?
There were a couple of things that we wanted to have a clarification on, what is an interim, I mean, an itinerant vendor definition, language that would take a home occupation out of annual inspections, and then also a consideration, maybe of, just a second look at the fees, more in the annual fees, rather than in the initial inspection or plan reviews. I don't think there was an issue on that, just on that. And maybe the other thing would be in an offset on that, would leave these fees alone and look at the business license fee. So you can get together and hash that out, and then once you have all that together, bring it back to us next meeting.
You also had a special fund as well.
Yes, correct, and a special fund. And that is going to be a matter of whether or not you can convince our manager.
Mr. Mayor Protem, what I'd suggest is if one of you can get together with me or Dinah, there is an itinerant vendor definition for the purposes of defining a business license, and we just want to make sure we use the same definition throughout.
And I'm just saying, you might want to look at that definition and make sure that it covers what we've discussed.
Because I do know that when they go for any kind of business license to the town, first thing that they do at the town code is send them to the fire department to go get their inspection as well, so.
Now, I just want to make sure that the booths that are within a arts and crafts fair, or fiestas and that, are considered under the definition of itinerant vendor.
Anything else? Very good. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Eric, and we'll see you on the 24th with the revisions and move on from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. 12B, Plaza Security Camera Update, discussions regarding the current security cameras.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the clerk suggests, and I agree, that perhaps with the respect of the last item, that there be a motion to continue consideration of this to the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Yes. So moving on then, 12B, Plaza Security Camera Update, Mr. Conrad Cordova, and Chief Weaver, I guess, since you're walking together.
I'm here for moral support, sir.
Moral support.
Chief, you look 15 years younger.
I came before you just to give you an update regarding the cameras out in the plaza. This comes because of some, I guess, previous misdoings with one of the vendors. As it stands right now, the cameras out there, there's only two cameras at work, but there's no way to, there's actually five total cameras, out of those five, only two work, and there is no way right now to get that data back over here, because the wireless link that connects the cameras from the, excuse me, I'm kind of winded, but from the plaza back over to Town Hall is also down and is not operational, and that needs to be replaced. And even when that was operational, it was, it was a lot, it was not a very good system that was put in place and had very minimal bandwidth, and so I did get some quotes to replace all of that, which has more bandwidth and is capable of putting in, or supporting more cameras, up to eight cameras if needed, and a larger bandwidth. The cost is pretty high, as it is right now, and so I did get two quotes from two different vendors. One of the quotes is at about $32,000, and the other quote is at about $37,000. So that's kind of where it's at right now. I think Chief Weaver had some things to say also regarding the cameras.
Conrad, what's the reason for the cost on that? Is that the camera software, the DVR, what is?
That's, it's broken up into multiple parts, labor, the equipment for replacement of the total wireless system, and up to eight cameras, including switches out at the plaza and at the town.
So, and this is just off the other side, being that that entire plaza is now wired with fiber, why couldn't you just do a point-to-point back to Town Hall, as opposed to running it over wireless?
We could do that. That would imply that there would have to be some form of reoccurring cost also, and when I did spec it out, I specced it out as a turnkey solution, so that there wouldn't be reoccurring costs.
Reoccurring as far as?
A monthly fee, too, in this case. I assume you're talking about Kit Carson.
Kit Carson charges a $50 point-to-point, month-to-month, up to 100 mig, so I wouldn't see the cameras utilizing more than that.
No, they wouldn't.
So, I mean, I think there are solutions out there, we just need to start really looking at them, because, I mean, now you're taking a 30-some-thousand-dollar cost to hundreds, you know? If we get away from that wireless aspect, which I know we're fond of for some reason here, I mean, we feel the strains even, I mean, I don't use an iPad anymore, because it can never connect to the network. So, just food for thought. You know, it's just looking at more efficient ways to do things, start utilizing the technology better. Chief?
I have no idea about technology. I still have a piece of paper and pen. So in regards to, you know, technically how to do this, I have absolutely, positively no idea. However, if the goal of the council is to get video coverage of the plaza, where the camera used to be, which is on top of the gazebo, I would probably argue that probably better placements would be to have cameras that are actually filming on both ends of the walkways, so we can see people walking in and out, and actually get a closer inspection of them. When, you know, when the cameras are up on top of the gazebo, it kind of gives you a good picture of the whole idea, but really not a whole lot, really good identification of folks. So as to what kind of cost that would increase, I have no idea, and I have to turn and look at Mr. Cordova.
What about the placement of the cameras on the light around the park?
On the traffic lights? I have no idea.
Not the traffic lights, I'm talking on the lighting, the plaza lighting.
On the plaza lighting?
Because there would be more areas of the plaza covered, the gazebo was basically, if you're looking east, you don't get anything.
Yeah, and then you're kind of looking to see what exactly is it do you want to capture. So you kind of have to look inside the crystal ball and see what kind of crimes, what kind of criminal events do you think are more likely to occur? Are there property crimes against the stores, or are there crimes against people inside the plaza? And then really kind of configure your camera system as to what you want to capture. And then the technology, obviously, you can get relatively cheap cameras, all the way up to cameras that are phenomenal, and I think it would really require, people are far more intelligent than I do, do a good study of that, and really determine what exactly it is that we're trying to capture.
Well, I think your statistics would tell you what you want to capture.
Actually, well, as it stands right now, we're absolutely...
I mean, what type of crime is happening on the plaza? Is there more person-to-person, or is it more things that are happening to businesses on the plaza?
Right, currently inside the plaza, when we talk about, you know, statistically, it's actually relative to the low crime... relative to the low crime rate area. And I would really say that probably the biggest, the biggest crime that's happening are actually shopliftings that are being incredibly under-reported by, by the shop owners, and we're having those conversations as well. Recently, the crimes that happened were actually vandalism that happened on storefronts. And at one of the stores, the, the business owner actually did have a camera that was installed, actually looked directly at the door. Even with that close of a video, it still took a little bit of work to really figure it out who that person was. So, you know, it really kind of goes into the direction of what you want the plaza to be. The more people that you have in the plaza, historically, crimes against property tend to go down. More people in the plaza, then also more crimes against people go up, just because that's the way that, that transfers around. Without having a real clear picture as to, as to what happens in the future, but if I were to say, you know, constantly, like, right now, I would really want cameras that were able to actually view down the walkways, so we can actually see the people walking. We could probably get all four sides, and then whatever happens inside the plaza, if it's not videotaped, at least we do have documentation of the people that walked into that area.
And the reason I'm asking that about putting them on the lights is basically what you're saying, because the information that Conrad gave us in the proposals from these people was to put the cameras on buildings, which wouldn't catch the walkways, it would catch the park.
Exactly.
And since the majority of the crime is not on the park, but on people walking around the walkways.
Exactly.
You know, we're, we're looking at the wrong thing. So, that's where I looked at the light, the lighting fixtures or the units that are around the park and facing the cameras then into the portals and the street would give us a better view of, of things happening that you have concern with.
Absolutely.
More so than stuff that's, that's happening in, in the park itself, because it doesn't seem like there's that much going on there. It mostly happens before that, and then they may cross the park to get away, but you need to capture them when they're coming out of the buildings or in the walkways.
Right. And then when we have, if we have more concerts or we have more people, so we have more population inside the park, you know, our, we actually may transition into really needing to have that good coverage inside the park as well.
Is it possible for those cameras to be adjustable to rotate depending upon what's happening? In other words, rotate them from the portals back to the, some of them back to the, the park where, where the concert...
Oh, I have no, no doubt.
If I may, the, the current quotes are all fixed cameras, but we can change them so they can be PTZs, so that they could be controlled from a remote location, so that you can set them to do different things or adjust them on demand as you so needed it, which would probably be determined by the PD themselves.
Now, that would be my assumption that, that the storage of that would be, would reside within your department.
Yeah. For me, the, the biggest concern, well, not the biggest concern, I have tons of concerns, but to make sure that we do have storage capabilities, you know, we're not going to be able to have a person that monitors the thing 24 hours a day. But I want to make sure that we have, if we're going to go down this path, we make sure we have quality enough cameras that really capture the detail that we need with the capability that we can actually deal with it live if we need to, and then real good storage capabilities and capabilities of actually being able to draw screenshots off of it, et cetera. I have a feeling I'd be the, Conrad's probably greatest nightmare, because I'd keep wanting more and more and more, and everything I'd want would increase the price to tag, obviously.
And I think some of that, so, I mean, I can have somebody from technologies call you, Conrad, so I'm not involved with it, but, you know, we do fiber loops continuously, I mean, for the casinos, for the pueblo, you know, just to do their live webcams and whatnot, and we do a continuous fiber loop that just runs it right back to a cloud. And, I mean, it's a secure cloud, so either way, I mean, it's accessible to you, the officers, whoever needs to view it. At the same point, Conrad being able to monitor from wherever he's at, not necessarily needing to be in town for the weekend if, if something goes down.
Right.
But I think utilizing the fiber bandwidth on a fiber loop, I mean, we're just going to charge for the bandwidth, so it's not...
Ultimately, the, the camera fees would come back to Town Hall to a DVR, and then the DVR would be what would be accessed, and you could access, you set it up so you can access the DVR from wherever.
And also, another nifty idea, if we could have this, I'd be really happy, is if we can get cameras installed in Kit Carson Park as well.
Well, we already have, and this is the interesting thing, we ran fiber to Kit Carson Park for a wireless hotspot. So, I mean, it's, there's, there's another area for you.
And the same thing with evaluating that. I mean, do we, if we're going to do this, we just want good photographs of people entering the park, and then if something happens, we can backtrack, or do we have the big over, overhead? And also, another big aspect of having cameras really is to turn, to make sure people understand there are the cameras, and hope that they position so they don't become vandalized.
Is this a possibility for a grant under Homeland Security to get the money to put in these cameras?
I have, I have not seen a technology grant that will deal with that, that aspect.
I'm asking, Linda, is a possibility to look into?
Oh, we have to look into that for you.
Well, I'm thinking with the burn. No, with the burn grab.
I'm just saying, you know, because the operational cost would be minimal, but, but the real cost is to put in something that you feel is, is what you need to have rather than something to just throw up there.
Right, I agree. We, we currently are looking at a burn memorial grant again. We're actually, I think, in a real good situation, because all of law enforcement agencies are very, very highly cooperative, and the burn is really looking for as many people involved as possible, and I really want to go into the intel gathering and, and technology area of it, so we may be able to fit it in there.
Councilwoman?
I just want to stick my opinion in here. I think it's just a necessary service that we need for merchants, for tourism, for the citizens at house, and I'm really grateful to the merchant who had her camera on to capture this fellow who put glue in her locks, and it's just part of doing business, and then for safety reasons, it's, it's just crucial, I believe, so.
I think I agree with you, Chief, with regards to Kit Carson Park, being that it is one of our most visited areas, not just by the tourists, but by the locals as well too. Just to have that aspect of, you know, I think a lot of people feel safer even if it's just a camera watching.
My observations, Chief, and Mr. Cordova, thank you for coming today, are these. I thought I heard you say that crime on the plaza is not significant, that the real issue is shoplifting.
That's, that's throughout the town currently, and, and that's, shoplifting is one of those crimes, is always kind of constantly under-reported for a number of reasons. But as I've expressed to the council many, many times again, in the town at house, our crimes against property are on a steady incline, the trend line is going up, there's some direct correlations involved in that, and so I think it'd be rather naive to think that the shoplifting is sitting really heavy at these big boxes and is not hitting the smaller merchants as well.
Right. And then it's been my understanding that Officer Sanchez is usually placed down in the plaza?
During the summer.
Only during the summer?
During the summer. Now, we, and I, I have a commitment, and the commitment is still going forward, as soon as we get up to full staff, there will be an officer that is assigned to the historic district, and that will happen. We have three officers that are currently on the field training program, two of them are getting ready to get kicked off in about two to three weeks. The, Mr. Webb is, is beginning the field training program right now. Then we're scheduling the next hire to happen, probably the beginning of June. We have one certified and one uncertified slot open. And the reason we're waiting for June is because for the uncertified, I need to send that person to the academy, and if I, if I hire the person too soon, by the time they get out of the academy, they'll lay off probation. So, we're having to shift that a little bit, and also need people to be off of FTO so that I could start filling them in. So, I have no doubt that we should be completely full-staffed, probably January, February of next year. And at that point in time, there will be a person who's permanently assigned to the historic district.
Thank you, Chief. And then I'm recalling that we, and Ms. Perry or Mr. Bellis, perhaps you can refresh my memory a little bit more better, but we have a grant out for a master plan on the plaza and a master plan for the park, and it seems to me that our chances of getting both of those grants are pretty good. And I'm wondering if that's the time to work out the security system that Councilman Gonzalez is referencing at the park and that Councilwoman Cantu is referring to in the plaza, that we, instead of doing a patchwork set right now during these budgetarily constrained times, that we wait for the master plan and insert it at that point and go for a holistic systems-wide approach as opposed to a patchwork here that looks good for the moment until we redo the plaza or redo the park and then have to redo everything. So, I'm wondering what your thoughts are about that? The idea of letting the master plan move forward, working in security for the park and the plaza at that time, and then going at the problem through the master plan?
I, I think that's actually a better approach. You know, you can take it into perspective as to if you're building a new building, you put all of the infrastructure in at one time as, whereas opposed to just building the building and adding on these components later, which tend to be more expensive. I think doing, as you call it, the holistic approach is probably a more meaningful way to do this.
I guess that makes me think of the next question, so maybe Ms. Perry or Mr. Bellis, what are the timeframes with the two master plans on the, on the park and the plaza? What's the latest status on that? Any ideas? I know you didn't come prepared to answer that question, so I apologize.
Cultural landscape report for the plaza.
Why don't you come up to the, thanks, Linda.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Manager, Bellis. The cultural landscape report for the plaza, we are in the process of contract execution, so we should be able to begin that or go out to RFP for that in the next 30 to 60 days. In terms of the planning grant, that hasn't been submitted yet, so I'm hoping to get that out. My goal was to have it done by the first quarter, so I've got a couple more weeks. Getting the CDBG infrastructure grant out the door this week, and then, and that's next on my list.
Mr. Mayor Protem? I think particularly with the advent of Kit Carson installing the fiber optic throughout the town, it, it's an interesting, I think, almost, I don't want to say possibility, almost should be a responsibility on us to maybe take a look at both of the parks, the Public Works facility, all of the assets, and see that now that that infrastructure is there, how we could tie in with an overall plan and maybe get IT grants and police together to look at what's the appropriate grant, whether it is the burn, to take a look at all of this and laying out that, because obviously this is an opportunity where we don't have to lay that infrastructure, it's already there. We just have to tie into it. So, if council would permit, I would ask that, that we do exactly that, that we have Police Chief Linda IT get together along with Public Works and Facilities and see what our overall security needs are throughout the town and report back to you as quickly as they can get the technical information. We might not be able, I doubt we'll be able to do everything at once, but it'd be nice to have a phased-in plan so that each year, each six months, we can do a section of this and add on to it and not duplicate and have to upgrade equipment to accommodate the growth of the system.
But I think that, you know, I still feel that, you know, that we should look at, at a grant to get this done rather than trying to piecemeal it out of our budget.
Sure.
And if we can do that as part of this, in other words, if we do the master plan between now and the middle of next summer, you know, as part of that, as it goes through, we apply for the grant, because we would need to apply around October or so for a federal grant, then at least we got that in the, in the works, and by that time, we should be able to identify pretty much the type of security we want, not necessarily the exact locations, but you don't need that for the grant. You just need to know what you want to do, and, and if we want to take full coverage of the plaza and full coverage of, or half coverage of Kit Carson Park or whatever it is as part of that, then I think, because I believe the grant that you're looking for for the parks includes the plaza, correct? The planning grant?
No, they're two separate grants.
So, the park grant would be for Kit Carson and Fredbacher Park?
All three of the parks. It's a master plan for all three parks.
Okay. And where's the plaza grant coming from?
That's the Historic Preservation Division.
Would that allow for security, or is that, what does that grant allow you to do?
That's really, that's really interesting, because I don't know that it, it will, it's more from archaeological and architectural and the design of the plaza. I don't know, I, I tend to think that, no, we can't, but it's something we can, we're in contract execution, we can certainly find out about that.
Because, you know, if, if it's not included in that, if that's not what the grant is supposed to do other than catalog what's, what's around, then we need to look at some other way to look at security on the plaza.
Mr. Mayor Protem, it's a, it's intended to be a cultural, archaeological, and historical inventory or assessment, but then also to look at the design and the functionality of the plaza. So, I think in a sense it does tie in, because if you're going to put a pole in the way or move trees or do something like that, then, then that's certainly going to affect your angles. But yeah, it would, this isn't an implementation grant, it's merely to do that.
Inventory, yeah. So, that's what I'm saying, so we may have to look at something else.
Councilwoman Cantu?
Yeah, I was wondering, Conrad, if you could just look into bringing us back maybe a price through Kit Carson Electric, since they, they do so much of this kind of stuff. I know the casino goes through Kit Carson Electric, just, just so that we can see it, the range in the price.
I'll go ahead and get the quotes adjusted so that we have cameras on one quote and then another quote for connectivity provided by Kit Carson.
Yes, because I mean, even the police officers now are wearing video cams, they're just, they're just worth their weight, and it was really, really nice to see that somebody was, was actually caught and arrested for, for what they did in the plaza the other day, and, and it just, it adds up, it adds up, and, and, you know, it's awful to see when you become friends with merchants or whoever, that, that they get justice when the person is caught and put in jail.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We'll move on. 12C, matching requirement for Camino de Medio engineering and design discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding authority to provide and/or increase a match of local government funds not to exceed $60,000 for legislative appropriation for the engineering, environmental, and design work for Camino de Medio, with not more than one-half or $30,000 to come from the town, and the balance, the remaining $30,000, to be contributed from the county.
And I can report on that, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Okay.
Basically, this is initiative that came out of a discussion that had nothing to do with Camino de Medio, that Councilman Peralta and myself and Finance Director Fember were at, which dealt with 911 at the county, at which time Chairman of the County Commission, Tom Blankenhorn, asked where we were in regards to Camino de Medio and what we could do to speed that up, because what he was hearing from the governor's office is the farther along we are in design, the more likely we are to attract funding. And we indicated at that time that the costs, the only bid that came back for engineering and environmental was $370,000, which exceeded the $310,000 that we had available between the town and the county. It was then subsequently suggested between the mayor and Commissioner Blankenhorn, and I believe they approved last Tuesday at a county commission meeting, the allocation of 30,000, additional $30,000, not originally in the budget, from the county, with the hope that the town would put up an additional $30,000 that would allow that project to go ahead as is. In speaking with French, he believes that in negotiating the contract so far, he's reduced it to about $340,000, but to... But to reduce it any less than that would leave no contingency, which is kind of speculative considering what they might hit on the environmental side and might mean delaying the environmental or engineering in regards to a bridge on that road, which it seems neither the county nor the town desires to do. We want to move ahead on the project full speed. So the proposal here that the mayor asked me to place on the agenda would be for us to match what the county has done in finding an additional $30,000 to allocate to the project for the engineering phase. We have been, it's our understanding from our lobbyists and the county's lobbyists that the project has been recommended for $400,000 in legislative appropriation, which we believe is 150 each from each of our representatives and 100,000 from the governor's office. However, that's always, as Councilman Peralta will tell you, until it gets to the governor's desk, there's no guarantee there. So that's basically the history on that.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. Other comments? Ms. Councilman Peralta.
You know, if I could, in the discussion I had with the county on this issue, and I said that if we cut the budget on this, whether you take the bridge out or not, the environmental is the same in that whole area because it's high water table. In fact, it's, you know, above groundwater. So the environmental is going to be, you can't leave it out at all, and you have to do it. So we need to, to increase the budget to what was the engineering bid in order to make sure that we cover this properly, in order that, one, we get funding to do this. And by the way, normally, the shelf life on any engineering plan is about three years. After that, they require you to redo it. So we've got to get the funding to get this thing going within three years, and that's so important for us to have the shelf ready. So I would propose that. The only question I have for Mr. Bellis is, have you identified the $30,000?
Not yet.
Well, the problem is, we need to approve it, and we can't do it unless we know we have the money.
How about we, we actually have to do an official budget adjustment to find that, and so we can bring it back on the 24th?
Well, I'm just, want to make sure that we get the contract done and get this project moving as quick as we can, but we do need to, I mean, that's our responsibility is, we can't deficit spend, so we have to know where the money's coming from before we can prove it.
Councilmember Mayor Protem, Councilmember Peralta, we've been thinking, I mean, currently, right now, the only place that we really have that available cash is in our general fund reserves. I mean, I'm just saying that right now, if that's an identification. That's the only place I can easily say we have it to use.
And that's in the 60 days?
That's just in our reserve, yes, in our 60 days, 37 extra days.
So this would be how many days?
Uh, that would be two, like, two and a half days. And he's looking at me like he's going to kill me, but I'm not saying that that's where, but I know readily available, if worse came to worse, that's where we would have to take it from. I mean, knowing that unless there's a capital project, that, we do have a capital budget.
Right, we have the $50,000 from the CDBG, which is what we discussed.
That's right. So I stand to be corrected. We could take the difference between what French did last week on that co-op project and pretty much probably take that 30 from that 50 and use that.
That 50 is not spent or not, will not be spent?
That 50 will not be spent, only approximately 22 of it, I think, when he applied for a co-op grant as a match. We won't even get that co-op probably till next fiscal year anyways. But for sure, we have, we have $30,000 from there and maybe a little in the reserve of excess GRT that we've gotten on capital GRT. So I'd feel comfortable doing that and saying that.
All right. Mr. Mayor, then I move approval of the increase of $30,000 in the money come out of the CDBG excess monies that we have.
Okay.
Second.
Call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hun.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Fambro.
Sure. And I'll bring that back as an official resolution budget adjustment.
Okay.
But I think the approval is fine, knowing that.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that confusion.
Matters from staff, 12D. Any other matters?
Not at this time.
Item 13A, Tom Manager's Report.
Just some very quick things to report. First of all, I'd like to recognize Mr. Joseph Montoya from New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority, who I'm probably going to owe lunch to after this. Announcement that Council knows, but for the sake of the public, Louis Feinberg has accepted a position as Director of Planning, Community, and Economic Development and will begin on April 6th. Renee Roberts has accepted the position of Tourism and Marketing Director and will begin next Monday. We are scheduling interviews at this time for Chief Building Official. The RFP for Financial Advisors as a substitute, which was originally scheduled for a Business Manager, have been released. The RFP for Marketing Consultant, AKA what most people refer to as the Griffin Contract, has been released. The revised RFP for the Events Funding will be released on Friday. Council will receive a copy of that, as was discussed in advance. March 18th is a joint workshop of the Planning and Zoning Commission with the Historic Commission, and that will address signage, lighting, holiday, and sidewalk displays, as well as any other matters that the public wants to bring, business community wants to bring, as they relate to the downtown district and in particular, the plaza. And that group will recommend back to the council within a month. March 24th, at our next council meeting, the revised LEDA, LEDA, which is Local Economic Development Act, public hearing will be held. And I believe that's it for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We'll go ahead and skip 14A, Matters and Reports from the Mayor, as he's not here. Item 15, Matters and Reports from the Council. 15A, Public Records Request. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes. So, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, I am looking for clarification with regards to what the public records request requirement is, both policy-wise from the city and what Floyd stated to us as policy-wise from the state of New Mexico. My understanding is, is the fiduciary body of this city, anything that pertains to anything financial, and that be it employees included, that those requests are not purviewed to public nor the manager or the attorney. So I need clarification on that because I feel we've been directed in a course that that information is viewable and also attainable. Anytime that a counselor requests an item from a staff member or a department head, that the manager or the attorney is notified, and I'm not happy about that.
my usual spot because I think it'd be easier for me to address the council?
Please. Yes. So Floyd and me looking at this, this dictates under any person wishing to inspect, and I've looked at the AG's Office's website, which is a procedure for requesting records. This is to the general public. This is not to the fiduciary body. Now, it looks as if our town code, our town policy would take an overhaul if that's the case. You know, the mayor and members of the town council shall deal with department heads and employees of the town solely through the town manager. If I'm not getting responses out of my town manager or my attorney or my mayor or anybody for that, for that extent, I would have the sole ability, being elected by the people of this community, to go directly to my department head in finance, for example, if I had a question. I'm not going to filter requests through, through the manager or the attorney. And fully seeing this as a designation of custodian, which is, which would be our town clerk in Renee, that yes, any other request, oral or written, would have to go through her by the general public, that is not at the discretion of this council. So if you have some other form of documentation to bring forth to me that says that I am bound by the guidelines of the AG's Office as an elected official, then I'd like to see that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the way this actually came up was, we have a, and I don't know whether it's a monthly, I think it's a monthly, department head meeting with the town manager and the town attorney and all the department heads. And there was a question that arose because there apparently had been a number of requests by members of the council from particular department heads asking for records. And some of the department heads indicated that it was their understanding that the, any records request, whether they're inspection of public records requests, oral or in writing, be made from the town clerk. And actually, that's state law, that it says that the town shall designate a custodian of records and that all requests and responses to the request be made by the designated custodian or whoever they designate to do that. And at the county, and I will tell you this, the designated records custodian is the county clerk, but the lawyer, the county attorney or the county assistant attorney are the ones who always respond to all requests for public records, whether they're IPRA, Inspection of Public Records Act requests or not. And the reason that they do that is because there are very stringent rules regarding what can and cannot be disclosed. And so in, is with the county, nobody but the attorneys are the ones that respond, receive eventually, and respond to all public records requests. I've been, so anyway, that was raised at the council meeting, I mean, at the department heads' meeting. And so what we advised them was, is that all requests would, should, and will be made through the clerk because that's the designated custodian, and that's what our state law and our town ordinance require. So apparently, there was a records request made by a council member that was stated to have been made in October that wasn't responded to. Nobody was aware that that was still pending. The person that the request was made of thought that that request had been responded to completely and fully. And so there was no, nobody knew that there was anything else pending as far as any requests until there was an email received. And I will say that any email, and I think we've discussed this previously with the council, any email that's made requesting public records has been the subject of other public records requests by the general public. So those cannot be protected. They're records, they're available for inspection by the public, and actually, it has been, since I've been here, the practice of many members of the public to request what records requests have been made by members of the council. So I want to reiterate that and bring that up again because those are subject to public records requests, and if the information isn't forthcoming from the town clerk, the town is exposed to pretty heavy suit for damages for not providing that information.
Floyd, I think, again, that's on the individual general public side. We're, I'm talking on the council side. When I ask for a document, and if I go directly to Marietta, I've never had a problem getting that document issued from her. I mean, in any instance, or Renee, or any of my department heads, for example. I'm talking about the statement that you gave to Counselor Cantu, which was stating that by state law, the town clerk is the only one authorized to issue those public records requests to a council member. And that is where my, in itself, lies my mistrust within the organization, Floyd, is that if I needed an information request, be it through our HR department, that, you know, pertaining to yourself or to the town manager or to any one of our employees for whatever reason, that, you know, it's almost like going to tell Big Brother when this council is asking for those records, and irregardless of cause or what the reason is, that's my feeling. And again, being elected by the people of this community who put their trust in us to do a job, I don't answer to anybody but to them. So, and just to take it a step further, if you read down into the Office of the Attorney General, person in there basically means any individual corporation, partnership firm, or association, or entity. Now, the public body, which is what, is what we're considered, is the executive, legislative, and judicial branches of the state and local government. So, I mean, under that, with regards to custodian and how public records are handled, it's listed as persons. It's not listed as public body.
Well, both issues that you raised, first of all, I don't, I don't agree with you that the council members are not persons as set forth in the Inspection of Public Records Act.
We're listed under public body, Floyd.
Well, I think you're also identified and defined as a person because a person means any person, and I believe that all council members are persons, and it also, the definition is expanded to include corporate persons or other entities, which is also, in a lot of legalese, is named persons. But in response to my, to the question from Councilmember Cantu, I advised her, and this was on February 27th, that we met with the town department heads, and I advised them that pursuant to state law, the town clerk has been designated as the town's record custodian, and therefore, all records requests must be directly or forwarded to her. I believe that's state law. Only the clerk may respond because, and the reason I said that is because under our ordinance, she's designated as the town's record custodian, and the state law says the designated records custodian is the person who shall receive and shall respond to records requests. And that's what I said in my, in my email to Councilmember Cantu. And then I said, pursuant to longstanding town policy, copies of all requests are sent to the town manager and town attorney. I've asked Renee to forward to you the requested records in the possession pursuant to IPRA and the town policy. It's my understanding from the town clerk, and obviously, I've only been here for a matter of months, but it's been 20 years or so since the town policy has been that all inspection of public records requests are sent both to the town manager and to the town attorney. And the reason for, I think I explained that in a subsequent email, is that usually, record requests are made because of some perceived problem with the town, and that the only way those problems can be remedied or addressed, if they are indeed problems, is through the knowledge of the town attorney, usually through the knowledge of the town attorney and the town manager. And then finally, the other issue that you brought up about you going directly to department heads, that was also raised at the meeting that I referred to in my first email to Councilmember Cantu, and that is the ordinance that we have, which is 3.36050, which says, "The mayor and the members of the town council shall deal with department heads and employees of the town solely through the town manager." Neither the mayor nor any member of the town... Neither the mayor nor any member of the town council shall give any order directly to the apartment or employee, either publicly or privately." And I believe that that answers the question of whether any department head or any member of the employee of the town can be ordered publicly or privately to respond to records requests by members of the town council.
So you're telling me, as a fiduciary body, the legislative body, if I have a department head who has an issue with the manager, for example, under the whistle, state law of whistleblower, that they can't give that documentation to me either privately or publicly, or any other means, because of the fact that my town ordinance says they can't? So they're breaking a town ordinance as opposed to being protected under the auspice of state law?
Well, I think the reason for this ordinance is for the protection of staff and department heads, because if one town council member were to go and order or tell them to do something, and another council member would go and tell them not to do that, or to do something else...
But that's a directive duty, Floyd. That's not a request for a record.
Well, and the request for the record, as I said, shall be made under both state law and the ordinance to the designated records custodian. And I believe that, and again, I'm going to repeat that, that I believe under my view and interpretation, that there's no exception for town council members as opposed to the general public with respect to the Inspection of Public Records Act. I think the...
I think I would disagree with that.
All right.
It is our responsibility, as a fiduciary responsibility, under the statute, that we have the responsibility to have all information given to us as required. Now, I do agree with you that it can go as presented in our ordinance through the town manager, but that information has to be readily available to us in order for us to do our fiduciary duty. And it doesn't go through the town clerk. That is for the public. We are not the public when we act as a council. If I am as an individual asking for a public record, that's one thing. But when I do it as a member of the town council, that's totally different. And that's a different interpretation than you have of the law, but that's where I feel the law is. I have a responsibility to have presented to me the information that's necessary to do my fiduciary duty as a council member. And if the town manager wants solely that to go through him, then I'll go solely through him. But there's no way I'm going to give a directive to any department head. I may ask for information, and I've always allowed my council, when I was mayor, to ask for information. I did not allow them to give a directive. But if they requested from information from any department, they could get that information. But if they wanted to come through me to get it, then they came through me and through the town manager. But, I'm not saying, but if that is not what you want, if that's what the town manager does not want for the council to do, then I'll go through him to get that information. But I expect that information to be given to me immediately, and not three months, four months later, or even a week later.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, the Inspection of Public Records Act...
This is not an inspection of public records. This is information that's necessary for me to carry on my duty as a council member. There's a totally difference. I'm not inspecting records. I'm asking for information in order to do my duty.
Well, I think the...
And that's a separate, that's a totally different section of what we're talking about here.
Information is one thing, records are another. The context of this...
A record is information as far as a council member is concerned. If you're talking about public, then it is a record.
I agree with that. What I'm saying is, is that the context in which this matter arose was for a request for records. And the reason for the limitation by the Inspection of Public Records Act is because that there are some things that are not subject to disclosure even to a council member. And for instance, there are things in personnel files that are protected under federal and state law. And the Inspection of Public Records Act says that those shall not be disclosed. And the reason that you go through a custodian is because the custodian, presumably, has the experience and the education to determine what may and may not be disclosed, not just to the general public, but to council members as well, for the protection of, for instance, the employee subject to state law. And the reason...
Well, then, in that case, is the person who has that authority needs to say, "I'm sorry, but that cannot be disclosed." But to not do anything is not a response.
Well, I don't, what I said earlier was, is I know of nobody that understood that there was actually a request that had been pending. My understanding, after a complete investigation of this, is that everybody involved in it thought that whatever October request had been made had been completely and fully responded to. And the first indication that they found out that it wasn't was when that there was an email sent by a department head concerning an unrelated matter, and then there was a response that this matter had been, this request had been pending since October. But the act itself requires that most, if not all, responses, unless there's exigent circumstances, that those be made within three days. And my experience has been with the clerk, as she responded...
What you're responding to is not what we're talking about.
She responds the same day. So what I would ask, if you don't disagree, but I think that it's required, is that any request for records themselves, not for information, the request for information should be made under my reading of the law through the town manager. The request for records should be made through the town clerk, and it's been my experience that the response, those records are usually produced as quickly as she can get them from wherever they are. And usually, it's within a matter of hours. And so if you would do that, just ask the town clerk for whatever records that you're requiring, I think that you'll see that those will be produced to you in a very short period.
Floyd, for me, I want, and this is what I want, and I mean, I'll yield to my council for this, for their concurrence, but I want a rewrite of our town policy, and I want you to get a clarification from the AG's office with regards to what you feel is your interpretation, because that's exactly what it is in my eyes. You're not giving me a definitive, you're giving me an interpretation, much like I'm giving you my interpretation of what I read in the office of the AG's office. You know, in our ordinance, you know, I think it should be at the discretion of the council, whether or not they choose to engage the manager in any informational request. And really, because, I mean, if I put it back on a department head to give me a record, and there's some feeling of repercussion, because, hey, they answer to the manager, and the manager technically answers to the council, technically, then there's always going to be that feeling. Now, if I go to Marietta to ask her for, I'm sorry, Mary, I'm just picking on you because you're here. If I go to Marietta to ask her for an informational request on anything, she should not have to feel fear out of repercussion from the manager, from the attorney, from the mayor, or anybody else as to why I'm asking for that document. It's her obligation to give that document to the city council for whatever reason it's asking for, and especially out of the finance department. I want a rewrite of that code to be at the sole discretion of the council to engage the manager, not town solely through the town manager.
So, I'm not sure, there is no written policy about sending, the clerk sending copies of the...
Not talking about the clerk.
Okay.
I'm talking about the fact that in this, it states...
You're talking about the relationship between the mayor and the council and staff, is what you're talking about?
Yes.
And so...
Well, where it says, "The mayor and members of the town council shall deal with department heads and employees of the town solely through the town manager." Now, I'm okay with the employees, because I don't meddle in employee issues, but if I'm talking to a department head, that's outside the auspice of that.
Well, I, this is an ordinance that was adopted in 2013, but I think that it's probably been in place a lot longer than that. It's been something that's been on the books for the town of Taos, probably since Floyd W. Butler was his first town attorney in 1934, I believe it was. I bet that this was in place then, so...
Can you prove that?
No, but I can go back and look and see what I can find.
So either way, this council, 2015 today, as far as me, and I'll yield to discretion from my council, that's what I'm asking for.
I'll do some research and get back with you.
And so I'd like to caution the council at this point that this is not an action item.
It's not an action item. I'm looking for direction.
And, excuse me, councilman, I've got the floor for the moment. Thank you for your patience. I do feel that the chain of command is essential to be followed, that if I go into Marietta's office and ask for something, I am in effect giving her a direct order. I do believe that it lends to micromanagement and inappropriate manipulation, this kind of action. I do feel that if I have an issue with the manager about an IPRA request properly notified through the town clerk, I can always consult with the attorney or the mayor. So I do have recourse. It's been a longstanding policy, and here's the danger, that I could conceivably open up myself or the town for libelous or liability-like issues. And so having a clerk formally redact, having the attorney review it to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in jeopardy is an appropriate measure. I also think that Mr. Lopez will give us a full report on his research and probable consultations with the municipal league. So pending that, I'd like to move on. Any other discussion on this matter, Councilman Gonzalez?
I want some consensus from my council with regards to whether or not there's...
Well, as, excuse me for interrupting, but this is not an, this is not an action-oriented item.
Not asking for a vote?
So, 15B, other matters from council?
So you're going to yield away from me? I mean, this is the same tactic the mayor used that night, Fritz?
As stated, it's not an action item.
Didn't ask for it to be an action item. Didn't ask to vote on anything tonight.
Can you give us any guidance here, councilor?
It's on for discussion. I believe it's certainly open for discussion.
Is there anything new to add, councilman? Councilwoman?
Well, I'd like to know for fact and not hear the words "I believe." I'd like to know absolute what the wording is.
Councilmember, we can't hear you.
Again?
We couldn't hear any of that. Sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to know the absolute wording. I don't want to hear "I believe," you know, that's just, it doesn't work. I need absolute wording of the law. And it was always my understanding that is, when we got in, that council could request what we needed for our own information to make decisions. So I'd like to know for absolute what the wording is, so...
Was that a question of mine?
Yes.
I think there's a very quick and easy way to get whatever information you need as far as records are concerned. And that's what I tried to explain in the email, and that is, any time that you are requesting a record is to pick up the phone, or send an email, or come in and see Renee. She's been doing this for, how long have you been here? Twenty? Been doing public records requests for eight years. And she knows where to find the record, who to get it from, how quickly it can be furnished, and respond at the quickest time possible. And that's been my experience. I mean, at the county, they never produce anything before the three days, which is required, but maybe that's because the lawyers were doing it. But Renee, I think, she'll get a records request at 10 o'clock in the morning, and by 11:00 or 11:30, she's already responded to it. She keeps a record of all the requests and all the responses, and those are usually just in a matter of hours. And again, I'm going to say that the reason she does it that way is in case there's a violation of non-disclosure laws, so she can, and the reason that's why she sends it to the town attorney, is sometimes she has questions about whether, and sometimes it's good to put two heads together, determine whether or not things should be, can be disclosed or cannot, they're protected, and absolutely, there's a prohibition against disclosure. But that would be my suggestion, is if any time you want a record, just get ahold of Renee, and she'll get it to you, or Francilla, and they will get it to you as quicker than anybody else possibly could.
Any other discussion?
Not at this moment on that. I do have some questions, though, that I'd like answered, so...
Hold on, one second. I think maybe we do, just a response to Councilmember Gonzalez's request as far as what you feel or the Attorney General feels that the responsibility or the ability to get information by the council. Now, I do see the ordinance, and there may be a clarification to the ordinance, but I think we need that response as soon as possible.
I can't say how quickly I can get it for you, because I'm dealing with another entity that my experience hasn't shown as the most prompt to respond, but I will get it to you just as quickly as I possibly can.
Councilwoman Cantu?
Okay, all right. These are questions for updating. They've come up at several of the town council meetings, and then they've just never been responded to. One of them that was...
I'm sorry, you got a...
Again? Yeah, well, it's working for the moment. I wanted to find out about the letter that Councilman Gonzalez had brought up at the last council meeting, as far as a letter that Luis Reyes had requested pertaining to the streetlights.
That has not gone out yet.
Can you please copy us when that letter is going out, please?
I'm sorry, councilwoman.
It's Councilwoman.
What's, which streetlights? Are we talking down Estes and south, what?
These are the ones that are from Pasado, Cano, and Tarantios, the safety streetlights.
So, okay, DOT streetlights.
Right.
Now, DOT.
I believe that Councilman Gonzalez and I did have a short discussion on that afterwards, and it was my interpretation, as well as, I think, French's, that at the meeting that Miguel Gabeldoan was at, that it had been brought up about us doing the work on those streetlights to do the estimate, and he had said that his office would take care of that. So I had not been aware that I was to engage Kit Carson in that. But I will get a letter out to Kit Carson.
Okay, well, whatever direction we need to go, so that those can be in the works, and we can move on that. And I have a few questions to ask, but since last fall, this council has expressed the desire to have a workshop monthly, one meeting, one workshop, and when is that going to happen? I think it's been something we've all said we're desiring to have, so that we can have more of a conversation and...
Councilman, I wasn't aware you wanted workshops on the alternate weeks. We have had some workshops, which have been difficult to schedule, because we had MFA, DOT. We've been waiting since October for a return date from the county on a joint meeting, and we have had the two public forums, I think, in the last three months in regards to the downtown, if there are particular issues, or if you want me to institute that we'll alternate weeks between meetings and workshops, I will do that.
Yeah, well, I think that has been expressed for quite a while now. The next question I wanted to ask you, well, in November, I, at that time, I had requested if Joni Griffith could come and report monthly to the council, and she hasn't come once. So I was wondering, did you ask her?
Councilwoman, I believe that you actually made that request to Ms. Griffin when she was here presenting that evening, and she said she would be happy to do that, but I have not scheduled her to come in. I can do that.
Can you follow up?
I can request that, I'll request her to be at the meeting on the 24th.
Thank you. And I was hoping that you might be able to give us a report on the legislature this year and the funds.
My, as I had reported a little earlier on the Camino de Medio, that it's my understanding that as of last Thursday... that as of last Thursday, or that appropriations had been request filed for a total of $400,000 for the Camino de Medio project, which would be $100,000 from each of our legislators. That would be likely divided evenly between the town and the county. They weren't, as of, Floyd, was it Thursday or Friday we were talking to on the phone?
To...
To our lobbyist.
I'm sorry, Bill?
We were talking to our lobbyist, and the mayor was on the other line, and we had been informed that...
About the money that had come out?
Yeah, was it Thursday, or...
Yeah, I don't, it's in there, but the, the capital outlay bill is Senate Bill 159, and that hasn't been scheduled yet before Senate Finance, but I think it's gonna be sometime next week. You never know, those things get amended and changed and everything, but there was a indication of what at least Taos was looking at.
Right, and then there was an additional $100,000, again, our understanding, divided evenly between the two representatives, that was filed for the Youth and Family Center.
Well, Councilwoman, were you finished before you yield?
Okay. I was wondering if you had been able to get figures, and maybe Marietta, on the electricity consumption from the Christmas lights?
There's no way to break that out. It's my understanding that the lights are wired in throughout the downtown, there's an ability, there's a fixture that the lights can be plugged into, or the decorations, and that goes directly into the line, so they're not metered. Now, there's some discussion as to whether that is on Kit Carson's bill, but I doubt it. If it's on, if it's on a streetlight, it's our bill. But I don't know how to break that out from, those are LED lights, they're very low voltage, but perhaps Councilman Gonzalez has better technical knowledge than I do, but I don't know how to break out from our overall light bill for that area, what would be the normal lights, and what would, we can do a history, I guess, and see if this particular year is higher than prior years.
And that's in regards to, sorry, I was reading.
Until all the Christmas, the Christmas lights that were put up this year, all the wrapped trees?
So really, you would need the data from last year to this year, and really, none exists, because the trees weren't wrapped last year. So a good indicator would be this year to next year, to see what the spike or increase was from years previous. There's, I mean, unless you have some history, there's really no way to tell.
Also, the other thing, a while back, we had all, well, not all of us, but voted for the farmer's market, and I had mentioned some of the conditions that I wanted to see brought about for me to vote yes on the farmer's market. And I was wondering about reports on everything that I had requested there, whether there's a bus plan, there's signage, police presence, everything that was brought up.
The chief can respond to some of that. There is a bus plan he was working on with the farmer's market, but there also is another issue, and after he's done, I'll address that.
Good afternoon, again, afternoon, ma'am. So we, we do have the bus plan that the council approved, I don't remember when they approved, where the buses were going to park next to the restrooms there. So we have met with French, and several of the people, we actually had a meeting, kinda started organizing how that's gonna happen. So we're waiting on French to come back with a cost for taking out a small concrete barrier, and then some discussion about some painting and moving some planar boxes, and so that's proceeding. At the same time, discussion of the signs, as to actually how we want the signs to look, and where we want them to be. That is still going down the road. So, so from that, we actually have made some pretty good progress on it. Now, I'm giving French some time to get the numbers put back, put together. I would imagine probably within, taking a guess, within about two weeks, I should have a real good timeframe on where this, how they should actually proceed from there. So I think we're good.
Is there any plan for the trolley?
Yes, ma'am, we're go, for, during the farmer's, oh, I'm sorry, farmer's market. During the farmer's market, we actually have decided to leave the trolley the way it was last summer, with that same parking methodology. That actually seems to work out the best. When we talk about the possibility of growing the farmer's market from the market itself into the John Donne area, I have tentative approval from, I'm sorry, my memory has just faded me, the owners of the John Donne.
Paul Ray.
Paul Ray. Talked to Ms. Ray, and asked if she would have any issues with the farmer's market proceeding there, and she, she doesn't. She just wanted to make sure that whatever is in there doesn't compete with any of the shops that she has. Sir?
My motion to approve the farmer's market and the plaza was not to increase its size at all, so it doesn't go into the Dunn house.
Okay.
So take that off your duties. It'll save you some time.
It is now off the list.
Yes.
And then another conversation we had was talking about putting, putting in better traffic control bollards, and working a bollard capability, actually better controlling the plaza. From that, I extended that the bollards would be a real good idea, as far as the fiestas and anything else we may have in there. So just as a matter of fact, yesterday, we're still in the information gathering process. I'm finding that bollards are far more expensive than I thought they would be. So we're still trying to figure out what is the best way to have, if we do need to block streets off, to block streets off, but still make it so it's pedestrian-friendly, so we still encourage people to come inside. My concern is to have a roadblock, and everyone believed that that's a roadblock for everybody. So, still kinda going through, much like I've done crime prevention through environmental design, kinda the same thing of trying to increase flow with environmental design. So I've reached out to International Association Chiefs of Police, and we're still getting information on that. So that's going down the road. So, um, hmm, and what are the questions that we have about farmer's market?
Well, I, I'm curious about the signage. What, are they gonna be sandwich boards? Are they gonna be flat signs? Who's designing those?
For the, for the tour buses?
Yeah.
Okay. So for the tour buses, I think we're still kind of in the area of having signs that will actually be posted like a regular sign sign, and make them permanent. But I also wanted to make sure that they were not just words, but they actually had the emblems, to make sure that we had language blocks, I wanted to make sure that iconically we could make sure the traffic flowed to where it needed to be. So originally, when it was just gonna be tour bus signs, we could actually produce that in-house, but when we put that icon on there, so we're trying to figure out how to do that most effectively. Since, you know, one of the, one of the, one of the neat things about where we're planning on putting the tour bus is that we can keep that 365 days a year, therefore, I want the signs to be permanent, but also out of the way of pedestrian flow. Going down US 64, we're gonna have some conversations with the state to make sure, and also, I'm sure we have state sign laws we deal with, as well as the local ordinances. And so that's still another work in progress as well.
Is there gonna be enough manpower to be directing people to the parking lots that they need to be parking in, so they're not consuming everything immediately around, so tourists will have places to park?
Okay, so aside from the tour bu, tour bus, so for the farmer's market to, to address movement of the regular traffic flow, you know, I've kinda lightly thought about that, I haven't put a whole lot of energy into that, so I, let me focus on that a little bit more. That would probably be sandwich board signs. And additionally, I would be inclined to believe that that should probably be the responsibility of the farmer's market themselves. I certainly would assist them. I don't know, I guess that'd be kind of a joint responsibility, but that does make sense. You know, another, another conversation we had, when they talked about the horse-drawn, or the animal-drawn cart that they had, you know, they kinda had that planned as being inside the plaza, and I, I've pretty much nixed that idea. But I'm thinking it might be a neat idea between parking lots, actually, where they can actually move people with that kinda like hayride-looking thing. We might be able to get people to park deeper into some of the, some of the parking lots on the west side of Placitas. And while we, I do like the parking lot in the town hall, I, I worry that it'd be unsafe to have that kind of process, to try to, you know, hayride people in down that road, just because it's too narrow. So there will have to be really some hope of just really trying to encouraging the flow of the traffic through the parking lots, which is a science in and of itself.
Well, I think it would be really good to get a report from you until, yeah, farmer's market, market actually starts, so that we'll know the progress and what's, what's going on, and just to be aggressive, everything that we need to know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then I have one more final question, and as far as illegal water hookups, if we are going to be moving forward on investigating this.
We're, anything that comes to our attention by the staff being able to, by memory, or going through the records, determine, we are moving on a case-by-case basis to reconcile. It's a question of how do you discover it? And sometimes that's gonna be by accident, when we're doing roadwork, or there's a leak, because, as was the case with the water outage, that was a connection that went back decades. And it's also gonna be a question of manpower.
I just, okay, I just really would like to be kept updated on all these questions, so that, without having to ask, I'd appreciate it.
Understood. If I could, Councilwoman, there's, the council had approved the renewal of the lease for the farmer's market, and just to keep you informed, this is an issue that, well, because both the motion was made, but then also some of the concerns are being worked on with Councilman Peralta. There were two changes that the farmer's market wanted to make. One was that the existing lease specifies the town hall parking lot, and for the purposes of their insurance, they need to have it state the physical area of the plaza that they will be using. And the second one, which is a little dicier, that we're working on and trying to get some clarification from various sources, is the anti-donation situation. And as you heard in the meeting, or that might have been after you left, between the three of us this afternoon, Councilman Peralta mentioned that Ellen Ferguson had done an agreement earlier in regards to the fiestas and Mother's Day, that we're gonna take a look at and see what his, I'll get a copy of that for Floyd, to see what help, what direction that'll help us with.
Okay.
But that's, that's not a decision, unfortunately, that's in our hands. That's, again, one of those things, there's a meeting, the affiliates of the procurement affiliate of the league, and I think it's Rieduso on the 23rd, and we're hoping that at that meeting, there'll be some clarification to all the municipalities, because that's strictly for the procurement officers.
That's all I need to ask.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Peralta?
You know, for the, for the council's information, and for the public, capital outlay is not decided till next Friday. So any requests are in, are only requests, until the legislature gets together, and that's the House and the Senate, will get together and burn midnight oil and decide how they're gonna split up the funds. And there's about 40 requests from Taos County communities and organizations that are asking for money from our legislators. So how they're gonna split that up is anybody's guess, because there are, you know, certain commitments that legislators have made, based upon their feeling about a certain institution or government, or whatever it might be that, that gets in there. And there's only so much money that they will get. And the difference will go to the governor, and the governor has already got, on her plate, a lot of things that she wants done nationwide, so it's hard to say how that's all gonna boil down in the end. And that's the reason I made a comment earlier about that we need to get our project ready with Camino de Medio, because we may get it funded this year, we may get it funded next year, or we may get it funded in 10 years, but if we can get the project started, it will minimize the amount of money we have to spend on engineers. But we don't know what we're gonna get, and nobody knows. And so to even talk about what is out there in our funding bill is ludicrous at this point, because nobody knows until they sit down and start dividing up the pot, and the pot could be shrinking, as we talked, depending upon how oil and gas goes in the market between now and, and what the forecast is for the next five years. So that's all gonna be determining what we do, because the bonds that you get your money from are based upon the revenues that are coming in over the next 10 years, really, or 20 years. That's how they issue the bonds. So if they feel that this downturn in the amount of revenue that's being generated by oil and gas currently is going to extend for a longer period, for whatever period time it's gonna extend, is going to make a determination as to what they're gonna actually work with at the end of the year. I think at the beginning of last summer, they were looking at about $200 million, now it's down to 160, and it could go lower than that. So that's gonna put a lot of pressure on what people will be able to get out of the legislature this year. So, and if there's a rebound in that, then it could make a, an infusion of money coming in next year. So we have to look at all those as different factors. Also from the legislature, our audit language correction for lodgers tax passed out of business and employment this morning with the due pass. It goes from there to the, used to be Tax and Revenue Committee, which is now Ways and Means. That'll be the last stop in the House. The Senate Judiciary doesn't have it on its schedule yet, and I'm hoping to get it under tomorrow. And if that's the case, that's the last stop in the Senate, before it gets to the floor. There was only one minor amendment to it, and that was just a clarification on language, on what it meant to be equal representation from lodgers and industry. So that was clarified this morning, and then that'll be the only amendment to that bill going forward. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that I may have to go to Santa Fe tomorrow, or a Friday at the latest, and then it'll be over with in House floor, or Senate floor vote I can't participate in, so my job will be done, and it'll be left up to the legislature to determine what they wanna do with it, and the governor, if it gets to her desk. So that's where that stands. As far as the funding for the sole community provider, or the hospital money, it wasn't in House Bill 2. In talking to the lobbyists for the hospital association, the 1/12th is in current law, and so therefore, it wasn't in House Bill 2, on the county side. The money that is going to be appropriated to make up the difference for funding for the tool, full match to the feds, will come in the Senate's reworking of House Bill 2, or the budget bill. And the expectation there from the lobbyists is that all the money will be in place, and we'll get full funding next year. So hopefully, that'll stay, and that's pretty much where those things stand. If there's anything else that you are interested in happening at the legislature, let me know, and I'll get the information for you, and keep you informed. There is one last thing that I have to discuss, and that is, this month is the timetable for the annual evaluation of the town manager, and so we need to get whatever forms we're gonna use for that together, and, and get that going, because that's a responsibility under the contract, every annual, before the 17th of March.
Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Gonzalez, I just wanted to clarify that I don't believe that you're asking for Attorney General's opinion, because when I was at the county, I understood those aren't available to counties, some county commissioners wanted that, and I believe that holds true for council, for town councils as well, but I... that, and I believe that holds true for council, for town councils as well, but what I will do is try to contact somebody in the Attorney General's office and see what their opinion might be on that.
Well, being that you said that, Floyd, I was gonna hand you this after the meeting, it's actually the GCA, the Governmental Conduct Act, outlines a lot of that stuff in there, which is, if you wanna write this down, or I can just give it to you, they're all the sections that are within there that give discretion to a public official's authority under the auspice of just, with some of the stuff that you were talking about, which is, being that we're in the view of public trust, and any action that we take, we're bound by the Constitution, not just of the US, but the New Mexico Constitution, that states that any privileged information we're given will be treated just as such, which is privileged. So, I think it answers a lot of the questions that, you know, you're raising as to whether a council member could go and create a lawsuit for the town, absolutely, yeah, but we're bound by the Governmental Conduct Act. So, I'll give you the provisions of what, in the just brief, short 10 minutes we've been, since that discussion that I found.
Councilwoman Kent, too.
I just have one more comment to Chief Weaver. Chief Weaver?
Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering, when you're working out this bus plan to be stopping over at the, by the bathrooms, by the Dunhouse, just for the sake of fairness, because I really like fairness, is it possible to drop off at Tuesday morning as well? So that Ladoo Street, the south side of the plaza, will also get their fair shake at the visitors?
And I understand, and the big concern that I have with Tuesday morning, there's a couple of concerns. One is actually the access to the plaza from there, we would really need to clear that up a whole lot. I'll then back up. Absolutely, we can take a look at that.
Okay, 'cause that's really my home territory right there. I go through that, through that walkway every other day, and I've never had a problem with it, and I'm really hoping that some of the buses would be able to stop there, and so that the tourists could start on that side of the plaza.
I will incorporate that.
A lot of people would appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask for one clarification? If I understand, directions to staff in regards to the workshops, any week that we do not have regularly scheduled meetings, so that's every other week, we should schedule a workshop?
No. My former life, we had a regular council meeting, second Tuesday of the month, the fourth Tuesday of the month was always a workshop meeting, period, and what we did there is we discussed those items that would come up at the next council meeting, so that the council had a full opportunity to discuss informally those things, and if they weren't ready for the council meeting, then further information could be had before they got scheduled into the council meeting, so that we didn't have these long discussions at the regular council meeting about these issues, or that the information was not complete in order for us to make a decision. And that was the purpose of the workshop meeting, was to get all of that settled before it came to the council for action.
So, alternate between a workshop and a regular meeting every other week?
Correct. Well, every other meeting.
Every other meeting, okay.
That was, that was what we did, and it worked very well, because it kept the regular meetings short, but the workshop meetings were from 9:00 in the morning till whatever time they ended in the afternoon, so it gave you plenty of time to discuss things. It also gave you the opportunity to bring in things that were issues that, for example, staff had going forward, that Camino de Medio or something like that, where we could have a real nice, good discussion of that before we went any further, or, you know, the agreement that we had to have with the county, all those things were discussed at those meetings, rather than the regular council meeting. Then it was brought forward for us to make the decision. But it gave the opportunity for the councils very, to have as much time as they needed to, to discuss things, and also, the information brought in by the staff on their issues could be vented very well before a decision was made.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're at 15B, other matters from the council. Councilwoman Kent, too, anything else you'd like to bring up today? Thank you. Councilman Gonzalez, Councilman Peralta, okay? I've got a couple of things, no news with landfill or intergovernmental, the hospital health study committee is not gonna be meeting this month because of union negotiations. The nominating committee for the hospital's replacement of two board members, we had our first meeting yesterday, so that process has begun to roll. And then I am broaching very gently and in a low-key manner my idea of a summit, and at the last meeting suggested that I would get to the council a sample letter for your purview and critique, so I'd like to give you each a copy, if that'd be okay, and if you could, if you have concerns or interest, or if you can see issues, I'd sure like to hear about them. So, can I pass those down?
Sure.
Again, this is just a proposal, so you'll notice dates are incorrect, and the return address is incorrect, and...
It's a work in progress. There you go.
Bless you.
So, please let me have those critiques when you've had a chance to reflect. Could I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some of, second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kent, too?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon.[1785.66][1785.66]